Sorry. Say, uh.
Oops.
A sequelizer, you know, doesn't matter how short you want, this equalizes us. Makes me feel like the big man.
All right, good morning, Ms. Matthias, we are live, we are recording, we are streaming, you may proceed with today's executive review session.
Good morning, this is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Review Session for May 6, 2025. We will start with the decisions from yesterday, May 5. Item number 10, 2023, 41A through 46A, 71 to 91 Long Street Avenue of the Bronx.
Okay. So, um, you know, DEP had indicated that there was no capital improvement plan set out for this area. And we also received an FDNY sign off yesterday, I hope everybody had a chance. But I do want to go through the FDNY recommendations and just identify what the applicant had stated uh in its response. And I think this is, uh, we did get a comment letter which got converted into a formal letter. So applicant had provided response to those recommendations. So, um, FDNY states that applicant is required to comply with the appendix G of New York City DOB and New York City Fire Code, Chapter 5 roadway requirements. Applicant states that, uh, and I would strongly state that, um, that this application is in no way uh is going to waive any of the flood required requirements, that is not what this action is here for. BSA is not waiving any flood regulations or any applicable regulations there to, with regards to the construction of the site. Uh, fire, uh, fire department states that the fire hydrant must be located within 250 feet of all residential entrances. Applicant has revised the site plan and, uh, which has been submitted, um, confirming, um, that the entrances are located within 250 feet of existing fire hydrant. Uh, fire department also states that the spacing between nearest fire hydrants must be no greater than 250 feet. Applicant has stated that, uh, no new hydrants are proposed or required for the proposed buildings. Um, uh, fire department also states that New York City DEP's written confirmation of satisfactory fire hydrant pressure is required and email to city planning, uh, at F D N Y dot N Y C dot gov within 90 days of this letter dated of issuance. Applicant states that any hydrant testing is under DEP jurisdiction or fire department jurisdiction and the existing fire hydrants are located on city street. Uh, fire department further states that the curb to curb street width is required to be a minimum of 30 foot, uh, width. Uh, drivable surface with all applicable fire code references adhere to. Um, Long Street from Glenon to Hattin shall be built pursuant to the builder's pavement plan that, um, that would be approved by DOT and DOB. And the minimum width of the Long Street, uh, from curb to curb shall be 30 feet. Um, this, uh, fire department also states that, um, the street terminus of Hattin Place is designated as fire department staging, uh, requiring a 30 by 30 reserved area with asphalt marking, striping and, um, stating fire zone. Now, this portion of, uh, Hattin Place and the intersection of Hattin and, uh, uh, actually it's the head of Hattin away from the intersection of Long Street. This portion of the site is city owned and is a city street. An applicant shall coordinate with DOT or, uh, on marking and striping in addressing, uh, fire department's concerns. Um, no, uh, no standing anytime parking regulations approved signs are required to be affixed along the western portion of Long Street in front of lots 155, 53, 52, 51, uh, 50. Uh, now, this frontage of Long Street along the lot is not city owned, it is under applicant's ownership. And since it is a map street, applicant shall coordinate with DOT or, uh, on marking and striping in addressing fire department conditions. Uh, fire department letter also states that sidewalk paint in yellow and additional two foot diagonal striping is required on cited adjacent street portion. I have to say, I've never seen this asked before by fire department, this is something new. Um, fire department also requires that the proposed guardrail at Hattin Place and Long Street, um, is not accessible, uh, not accessible and not part of this approval. Um, applicant, uh, in its revised plan has stated, um, that, uh, the guardrail, uh, of Hattin and Long Street is going to be removed. The, um, fire department's final comment is that the existing street not open, uh, cited on the plan must be accessible for fire apparatus regarding asphalt marking, um, fire apparatus, I'm sorry. Now regarding the extension of, uh, Long Street from Hattin to Shafi, uh, this portion of the street is under city ownership and the development on the site will not be accessing, uh, from this portion of the streets. So BSA cannot require the applicant to build out this portion. I will strongly suggest this is where our community board should work collaboratively, collaboratively with city in, uh, securing capital plan, uh, to build out this portion of, uh, Long Street. So, um, I read this out because I wanted to be clear about what fire department's purview is with regards to this, um, um, GCL application and to what extent board can consider these recommendation and convert those as a condition as part of our grant. Are there any comments or questions that you want to add to the, uh, fire department's statements?
I'd just like to just add that, um, when you say our purview, you also mean our jurisdiction.
Our jurisdiction, exactly, thank you. So if everybody is okay with this, I want to read out, um, uh, the conditions that I'm proposing. So I want to make a motion to approve with the following conditions. That the applicant shall comply with all applicable requirements, including but not limited to those of the fire department, DOT and DEP. BSA is not waiving any flood regulation, DOB, uh, building code regulations, fire department or zoning requirements. Should upon further review at DOB, uh, or FDNY, it is determined additional fire safety measures would be required. Applicant shall work with the, uh, appropriate agency to address the matter to the extent it affect, it is affected by this particular project only. Uh, Long Street from Glenon to Hattin shall be built pursuant to a builder's pavement plan approved by DOT and DOB prior to obtaining a TCO. The roadway width of Long Street shall be a minimum 30 foot curb to curb, uh, curb to curb. And, um, the sidewalk width shall be a minimum of 15 foot along Long Street and Hattin Place measured from the curb. The roadway and sidewalk shall be constructed as per the approved site plan, builder's pavement plan and to DOT standards. Applicants shall amend the drainage plan prior to obtaining, uh, a TCO. An applicant shall work with DOT, DOB and fire department and DEP in addressing, uh, fire department's recommendations during development, including striping and street signage. Those are my recommendations. Uh, any addition, any comments? If not, motion to.
Motion to approve, Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Nishada.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Application's been granted. Item number 11, 24, 2024, 17A, 35 Marjorie Street, Staten Island.
Okay. Applicant, uh, made its submission in response to fire department comments, plans, uh, uh, were revised and, um, and access to Marjorie Street exists through a prior, uh, BSA action, I just want everybody to know that. This is not the first application on Marjorie Street. So we also receive fire department conditions, so I want to go ahead and if everybody's okay with it, I want to make a motion to approve with conditions. Okay. Uh, approve with the conditions that the retaining wall within the property, uh, of the, um, within the subject property be constructed prior to obtaining a TCO. The subject private, uh, street, and this is a fire department condition. The subject private street must be developed to the full standard width as per New York City Fire Code established as 34 foot minimum. The subject, uh, private street access, um, and I think this would, this condition should only be for the portion of the street frontage that is abutting the subject site. Um, and the subject private street access must remain unobstructed at all time, again, applicable only to the portion of the street that is abutting the subject site. So I want to clarify, the fire department conditions are only related to the portion of the street that is abutting the subject site. Um, any comments or cons? All right, motion to grant.
Motion to approve, Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Nishada.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Application's been granted. Item number 12, 29, 2019, 256 BZ 150 Avenue Z, Brooklyn.
This was probably the most, uh, the longest running application that the board had, but, um, it did go through a lot of changes and it is a very complex site given its uh, abutment to an MTA, um, um, train line, so it did require a lot of coordination. Um, and, uh, I'm happy to see this, that this has come to a closure. Um, BSA team, um, worked very closely and coordinated a lot of the reviews, so I want to thank the entirety of the BSA, uh, team. Um, so we have now all the sign offs. The environmental review is closed. We had, uh, closed the application because of findings were met, we were only waiting for the environmental review. So the environmental conditions are, an E designation has been placed on the zoning map pursuant to section 11 dash 15 of the New York City zoning resolution for the subject property. Uh, further hazardous noise assessment shall be coordinated through the mayor's office of environmental remediation. Before construction starts, the applicant must obtain, uh, concurrence from the MTA on the bus stop relocation and construction staging adjacent to the elevated subway. All relevant, uh, construction stages shall be coordinated with, uh, MTA. OCMC will, uh, review, um, the detailed schedule for each stage and related MPT plan when the permit application is submitted. Should a builder's pavement plan be required, applicant will submit a builder's pavement plan and all required drawings as per New York City DOT specification for New York City DOT review, um, and approval. With regards to noise, uh, a very detailed noise, uh, requirement is stated for this, uh, building because of its, uh, proximity, um, adjacency to an elevated subway line. A closed window condition and alternate means of ventilation will be required. Following composite window wall attenuation will be required by floor. Floors one through three, 43 dB a window wall attenuation, floors, uh, floor four, 36 dB a window wall attenuation, floors five through six, 35 dB a window wall attenuation, floors seven through 10, 33 dB a window wall attenuation. Floors, uh, 11, um, sorry, only floor 11, 31 dB a window wall attenuation. A minimum six foot high acoustical barrier providing at least 25 dB of in, um.
Insertion.
Sorry, insertion loss is required at the fifth, uh, floor terrace. A minimum of four foot high acoustical barrier providing at least 20 dB of insertion loss is required for the rooftop terrace. With regards to air quality, the proposed building HVAC would comply with, uh, subchapter 5, section 24 dash 207 of New York City Noise Control Code. HVAC type shall comply with all applicable laws and regulations as determined by DOB and other relevant agencies. If all applicable laws and regulations, um, permit, um, uh, permit the use of fossil fuel for the hot water system at the site and the applicant chooses, um, to use fossil fuel for such system, then the system shall utilize natural gas. So with that, I want to make a motion to approve with one additional condition, and that is board's approval of the instant plan does not constitute any waiver of any flood regulations that may apply to the site. Any change in use or operator would require a board's approval. Is everybody okay with that?
Okay, the motion to approve, Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Nishada.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Application's granted. Item number 18, 2023, 58 BZ, 197, 18, Hillside Avenue, Queens.
Okay, so, um, we received revised plans with notes related, um, the notes that, um, board had asked. Um, and also notes regarding the ABC being active all times. Um, this is a drive-through person to 73, 311, so it's an approval for a 10 year term. Um, so I want to make a motion, um, to make, uh, this grant with following conditions. Now, we also did receive, uh, DOT conditions and so this will be all wrapped into our conditions. The DOT conditions are that to verify the need for proposed improvement, uh, improvement measures identified in the uh, transportation impact study and to identify safety and operational measures, the applicant will conduct a transportation monitoring program, TMP, uh, which will include trip generation, model split, a modal split and, um, origin destination surveys, traffic data collection, LOS analysis, including, uh, progression and queuing analysis. The scope of the work for the TMP will, uh, be submitted to DOT for review and approval within six months of project completion. The TMP scope will include the study of 197th Street and Hillside Avenue, 198th Street and Hillside Avenue and both side driveways. The applicant shall continue to coordinate with DOT to identify improvement measures pursuant to the TMP. That the applicant shall also be responsible for all costs associated with the TMP and any additional measures proposed by the TMP. The applicant will coordinate, uh, the installation of any required signage within the right of way with the Department of Buildings for approval. Under no circumstances shall, uh, motor vehicles queuing be allowed to spill back onto Hillside Avenue, including blockages of sidewalk because of the operational and safety concerns and appropriate signage shall be maintained advising of the same. If this condition fails to be met during operation of the facility and no other additional corrective measures can reasonably be implemented by the operator, BSA in consultation with DOT and DOB and after permitting, the operator will advance a written notice, um, and opportunity to be heard, will take action to revoke approvals for the drive-through window and/or curb cut. Applicant shall obtain final DOT approval, all proposed lane assignment, signal and parking regulation changes as outlined in the final TIP, uh, sorry, traffic impact study. Uh, now the additional comments are board related and that is, ABC shall be kept active at all times. Signage shall comply with applicable zoning regulations and approved by, uh, by DOT, DOB. Uh, planting an eight foot high opaque fence with a minimum 26 dB ASTC rating shall be provided along the property lines. Landscaping shall be provided as per approved plan and all site lighting shall be directed down and away from the abutting residential buildings. Is everybody okay with those? Sorry, we had very lengthy conditions for obvious reasons. Um.
Motion to approve, Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shonda, uh, Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Nishada.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Application is been granted.
I, I just want to say, these cases, um, that we just, uh, called for second, uh, second, uh, call. It, we arrived at this situation because of the work that went behind the scene by BSA staff, council, our executive director to, um, and we always do that, we never leave a project behind, um, and, and we keep pushing, uh, the envelope in achieving, uh, what we believe is a fair and reasonable, uh, response to the findings and the determination. So, uh, it was a second call because we were close, we were there and we just wanted to wrap it up in, in a manner that would be legally sound and, uh, would address all the findings.
Okay, zoning calendar for the hearing for May 6, 2025, zoning calendar, continued hearings. Item number 22, 2024, 18 BZ, 15805, Union Turnpike, Queens. And for the record, Commissioner Nishada is joining us remotely. And we're still on a re-session.
Just give me a second, I am. So, um, this is a drive-through application and, um, applicant made its submission, including a revised site plan and a revised, um, TDF. In its, um, February 18 submission, traffic consultant responded to the comments that were raised by DOT regarding comparable site selections. Um, consultant, uh, states that, um, I, I actually found the consultant's report very helpful and I'm quoting some of these things because I think it's important for everybody to follow this guideline. Consultant states that, quote, factors such as adjacent roadway volumes, neighborhood vehicle ownership, community characteristics, et cetera, are generally better indicators of trip generation for Starbucks location, which in this case is a Starbucks site, um, than, uh, a square footage. Subjects, uh, unquote, subject site would have similar trip generation rate as a Foster Avenue site than, uh, the Cross Island Parkway site. And the Foster Avenue site trip gen was conducted and proposed analysis was revised, it, and it has been shared with DOT. Also, as per DOT's direction, consultant utilized 50% pass by credit rate, uh, for weekday peak and 25% for Saturday peak hour, um, based on a Staten Island survey, uh, Starbucks sample. I personally, I think I would want to know why it is different for, uh, from a SECR manual when the SECR manual requires a 50% credit for a pass by, um, and why is it different for Saturday? So if the applicant's consultant can explain that to me, that would be very helpful. Um, I know the applicant is doing it because DOT is requiring, but I'm sure the applicant may have had conversations with DOT, so it would be helpful if they can enlighten me on that. Um, the traffic analysis report also identified the intersection of Union Turnpike and, uh, Parsons Boulevard as meeting, um, uh, the, uh, the criteria of a high crash location. Um, and based on that, consultant will, uh, conduct a detailed safety assessment of the intersection in the revised, uh, traffic impact study. And I think that is consistent with the SECR, uh, manual. A report also confirms, uh, that the delivery would be during off-peak hours when the location is closed and would utilize parking areas to maneuver through the site. Uh, I, I found the submission that has been made by the traffic consultant helpful and I personally believe it responds, uh, it has been responsive to DOT's comments. But we do wait DOT's response and we, I know my team is working very hard to make sure all of these responses are addressed. Yeah, um, quickly and fairly. At the, uh, with regards to the revised plan, at the last hearing, board had recommended that no left turn onto Parsons be permitted. Uh, I did not see it indicated on the plan, um, please revise the plan. Um, also add a note to the plan, um, and I think this is going forward, we are going to require that all drive-throughs to note, uh, to, uh, add this note. That is, under no circumstances shall motor vehicles, uh, motor vehicle queues be allowed to spill back onto the subject street, in this case Parsons Boulevard, including blockage of sidewalks because of the operational and safety concerns and appropriate signage shall be maintained, um, advising of the same. And if this condition fails to be met during operation of the facility and, uh, no other additional corrective measures can be responsibly be implemented by the operator, BSA in consultation with DOT and DOB after permitting the, uh, the operator with advanced written notice and opportunity to be heard will take action to revoke the approval, um, for the drive-through window or, um, for the curb to curb, um, for the, uh, for the drive-through facility. Uh, since, um, eight onsite parking spaces are required and 16, uh, parking spaces are proposed, which is in excess. Uh, is the excess parking, uh, will it, uh, will it be used for mobile pickup, et cetera, uh, to streamline the queuing during peak period? Um, we know that there are certain, uh, operator, um, providers, especially Starbucks, they do implement these, um, uh, was it called, what is the term you use, Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Line busting technique.
Line busting technique, I like that. Line busting techniques, um, to, uh, speed up, uh, the, um, drive-through and also it's eliminate the possibility of queuing and backing up onto the street and side. So if that is the case, uh, please explain it and clearly state it in the statement of facts and indicate it in the plan as to which of these spaces would be designated for, um, during rush hours for such line busting techniques. And as I said, in the operational plan, the operational plan should also be clearly stated in the statement of facts. Um, otherwise, I think, uh, the, the application is heading in the right direction. Um, Vice Chair Shabeta.
I have no further comments, thank you, Chair.
Um, Commissioner Hartley Brown.
I have no additional comments.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Nishada.
Thank you, Chair, I have nothing further to add.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Yun.
Thank you, I also have nothing further.
Did I speak too much?
You got everything.
Hmm hmm hmm. Oh, I'm sorry, you guys should still chime in. Okay.
Item number 23, 2023, 59 BZ, 280 Bradley Avenue, Staten Island.
I have to, uh, say, I do appreciate the applicants want to make this school happen at the site. Um, and applicant, um, you know, we've been throwing out various alternatives and suggestions that may address, um, DOT's, uh, issue and community's issue with regard to, um, traffic backing up on Bradley because Bradley is a two-lane, uh, two-way, one-lane in each direction. And so there really is not any, any space for, um, any vehicles, um, to park by the curb side. So with that concern in mind, um, the board at the last hearing had asked to see if much of the, uh, bus parking can be accommodated within the site, uh, and minimize, uh, any backup on Bradley, um, avenue. And applicant did put together proposals such as that, where the ground floor, pretty much a good part of it is, uh, will become a bus drop-off area, uh, for, um, uh, for, I think, uh, six or seven buses and, and then, um, that would, uh, reduce the queuing or any backup onto Bradley Avenue. The applicant is also proposing an operational plan where students will come by school bus, um, primarily and, uh, and, uh, secondary will be walking to the site. So, and school will implement such a policy to eliminate any car pulling. Now, um, in that case, the modal split will be 75% of the students will be arriving by bus, uh, sorry, six buses, that is. And 25% of the students will be walking to school and, uh, um, 90%, 95% of the staff will be arriving by foot. Um, and the applicant states that the older students will walk to and from school, younger students will be picked up by parents, um, who will be, uh, walk to the school. Now, I do appreciate, uh, this operational plan, but it is very difficult to implement it on a daily basis. Um, how will the school enforce, uh, parents from driving to the school? Uh, what is the total number of buses that will access the site for drop-off and pickup in 45 minute and a 35 minute window respectively? Um, now, when I looked at the plan, it showed that it had the capacity for a turnaround, uh, for a lay-by area for six-way bus, large buses, not vans, large buses, but, um, it looked like it was a very tight turn. And I'm not sure if the building structure can be saved from being dented by these, uh, buses turning around, so, um, while I, that suggestion was made, it was not made to just make it work without consideration to the building's safety and, uh, operation. So, um, and also the revised plan reduces the total amount of, uh, floor area and much of the classrooms are going to be now the second floor and the third floor and a fourth floor, a partial fourth floor has been added, um, to accommodate, uh, this, uh, students. Now, the initial proposal, um, ha, has, um, actually would have more students, but by, by just by, by a number of eight, so it's not much of a difference. Um, now. Um, now. The. With regards to the fourth floor. Uh, the applicant is has responded to a question, a comments that was raised by the board. To reduce the height of the parapet wall, um, it's not clear whether there would be a parapet wall or not. And and if it does not have a parapet wall, will it be accessible to students? And actually, it will have a one foot six, the six inch high parapet wall. Um, that is not high enough and it therefore cannot be accessible to anyone for safety reasons. The question then becomes where would the children be playing? And should um, you know, I think if I I don't know what the comments I'm going to hear from the commissioners, but. Should the board consider this alternative, which I think has a lot of problems in terms of simple site planning? But this would have other issues with regards to air quality and noise and. I think um. The the having uh, there needs to be proper shielding of of the driveway from the surrounding neighbors. And to minimize the noise and the emission level from the vehicles, because they will be parked there for forty five minutes or thirty minutes or so. So I I do appreciate the applicant trying very hard to make this site work for a school of this capacity. But I I am coming to the conclusion that this site may be too small for a size of for this school's size. Um, and may not be an appropriate site for a school unless the vehicles can be contained, given the location of the site. And that it's fronting on Bradley Avenue with no um curb site parking being available. Those are my thoughts. Um, Vice Chair Shabeta.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I've I've come to uh virtually the same conclusion as you have. Uh, I think this plan is a bit ambitious with the bus turnaround on the site and considering the size of the site. I think that should be reviewed by D O T. Air quality, especially with regard to the neighbors, having those six buses parked and run allegedly running for some fortunate time. Should have some effect on the neighbors. I also believe this plan should be sent, I'm not sure if it was sent, out to. The community board and the elected officials and the community at large, which is very vocal about their position on with regard to this site. Other than that, I agree with your comments. I have nothing further to add.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Otley Brown?
So I also had similar objections as you did as to, as you both did, as to the suitability of the internal driveway. For the loading and unloading, I think that the curve is too tight for buses turning in the rear. Resulting in potential for destabilizing the whole structure if those buses are hitting those beams on the curve. Um, I don't know whether or not there's another solution to bringing the buses onto the site without them going through the entire building. In order to make the turn, whether or not perhaps a layby might actually work a little bit better, even though it does accommodate less buses at a time. We're talking six school buses here in each direction and you probably don't need to accommodate all of them at the same time. That being said, I also had a question about their intention to ban carpools. So the first question would be, how would the school be able to enforce no carpooling? And also, it's kind of interesting that they would pick carpooling as the um. The mode to ban, wouldn't it be worse to have cars with only one child? Because then that's many more cars coming to the site to deliver children. And frankly, to be honest, I don't see that the ban is enforceable because cars coming to the site are just going to then pull a hundred feet away from the site. And hold up traffic as they load or unload their children who will then run down the street and run into the building. So I'm not sure that they'd be able to achieve the result that they're hoping for with that ban. So I look forward to hearing how the applicant um will give us alternative solutions to these D O T stated issues.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Asheta?
Thank you, Chair. Actually, I I like the idea of the interior driveway. Uh, even though I have, I have like real concern about the the turning, but. What mitigates my 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 concerns? And I wanna, I wanna share my screen to show what I'm talking about here. Give me one second. I'm gonna share the plan. Yeah, if you look at the driving lane here, it's not, that the way it's it's thrown, actually, it gives you the impression that this, the driving lane is this. And 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 when when you look at the alignment of the bus path. It it seems like that it's biased towards the right. That the driving lane, as far as I understand, it's from the edge of the column. To the edge of the wall, which is twenty feet. I believe twenty feet is is might be okay for a bus. But I'm not sure if 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 the person who laid off this. Turning operation or turning configuration, I would say, is 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 a traffic. Experienced per person. I I I'm not sure I can, I cannot tell. But the way that that turning process is shown. Actually, it gives like a real concern. If you look at this bus, for example. It's almost touching the edge of the sheer wall in the back or of the column. So that's that's a major concern, same thing here. So I would say, I I I wanna give him like a a chance to like re-draw this in 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 a better way. And then submit it to a sister agency who's capable of reviewing this and opine on it and giving us feedback. And at the end of the day, I would caution them. If they're gonna go with that option to fender all the columns. And all the structural elements that could be in touch with a bus during the turning process. Fendering means that to put something. Uh, elastic like defenders for the for the ships when they come to the the marina or the like a. A perthing uh uh dock, they put something like like the simplest. Shape of fenders is is the tires, that 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 vehicle tires, they put them around like. Tiny jets or birthing docks to make sure that when that ship or the boat hit. It's not gonna hurt that berth or the board itself, it's not gonna be hurt. So I I would. Like suggest some sort of fendering here. I'm not saying use the tires, but I'm saying use some sort of fendering. Probably elastic coating for the around the six inch or something around the column. To make sure if the bus gets in touch, it gets in touch with something elastic and doesn't like. It transmit the head to the structural elements or to the columns. So that's that's one thing. I I again, I like the idea. I don't wanna like. Uh, say it's a bad idea from from like the first look. But I I would give him a chance to defend it if they can. And and if if a sister agency. Uh, list that, I'm I'm fine with it. Uh. Re- regarding the 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 implementation of this option. I understand that they need some some like compensation for the floor area. And 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 that's why they are asking for a partial uh fourth floor. I'm I'm open to consider that. Uh, and I understand that that the floor area has been reduced. But they are asking for for some additional uh floor that wasn't considered before. So I'm I'm again, I'm open to to consider that. With that, I'm I'm done. Thank you.
Commissioner, can I just follow up? Um, your idea with regard to what they use at docks with the tires, um, I do appreciate that, but. I I think there's a, there might be a bit of a difference between a boat that's in water. And the type of traction that that has as opposed to a school bus filled with children. And the type of impact that that would have and and that this is not gonna happen, this is going to happen. Uh, what, two hundred and twenty days, a hundred and ninety days out of the year? What are the chances of that 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 we're creating some sort, we we might be, this might create some sort of hazard. Both to the passengers on the bus and to the just the. The reality that this is gonna be six buses every day of the school year filled with children.
Let me, let me, let me explain. I I didn't mean, and I I mentioned that in my testimony, I didn't mean that they use tires. I meant that they use fendering and fendering the cheapest way, and it's not even like a. A an industry standard is to use tires. I wanted to give the tire example to like explain the idea. But if you look at like real birthing docks and jerrys. They have ships coming, the the tonnage or the the weight or that energy, the motion energy, the kinetic energy. Of that moving ship probably is a hundred times than a school bus.
Is.
Yes, it is. Second, moving in in water is much more dangerous than moving on asphalt. With with a steering wheel, with a guy sitting on that wheel who can. Like really control the direction of travel in in water when the ship approaches. At 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 birthing dock, it's 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 floating, so it's that control is not that precise. If you come to the frequency, if you look at real dark and birth. It's.
Commissioner Sheta, I think we get the picture.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Um. Commissioner Yun?
Um, thank you. Uh, I also have doubts about eliminating all car drop offs or to even assume that that's possible. Because kids are gonna miss the bus and parents will drop off their kids. Um, and this site, as you said, Chair, is actually too small to accommodate. It's not just the site, but it's also the street that it's on. It is a very vulnerable site in the sense that it will. One thing goes wrong and it will cause a lot of traffic issues because there isn't a parking lane, there isn't a, any additional width. On the street and you have a projected four hundred and sixty students with currently three hundred and forty five estimated to arrive by bus. Um. One bus has to make a three point turn in that driveway and the whole thing is is backed up. We need to know if if we were to pursue something like this, there's a mention that the buses will wait at another location offsite. We would need a lot more detail about how that would work. Uh, where that waiting location would be because you've got a two lane road for a considerable distance. Um, and I mean, we've all driven by schools with buses and they're always double parked. So here we have no even, we don't even have room for one, a single parking lane. Um, I appreciate the effort with the driveway and it, but it just feels too tight. Uh, those buses you can see in the turning diagram, even with protection, even with, you know, stabilizing the concrete or protecting the concrete. There are ways to make bollards that prevent the the structure from being hurt, but. It just look at how tight that is. You've got six drivers with a bunch of kids in there and they're supposed to make that turn every, two turns every time. I mean, it's it's quite a lot to ask, it seems, and to not have some one small problem that will end up generating a bigger traffic buildup. Um, but all that being said, I also appreciate that the team listened to what we said. You lowered the parapets to one foot six to make the building seem smaller. You will need fall protection, at least from an OSHA standpoint, um, as the chair mentioned, so those could be offset. I don't think there's an outdoor place base being proposed anymore, so the roof would need fall protection for maintenance, but not for. Children, from what I understand. You can correct me if I'm wrong. Um. I also appreciate that the stairs and the elevators have been moved to the center of the building so that all bulkheads would be further from the street wall, which is. Something I had asked at the last hearing, so thank you for that. Um. I think we just still have a transportation issue that I'm not convinced of. I don't think that this is solving that problem yet.
Yeah, I think we are all coming to the conclusion that as, yeah, this is. Um. This is not the site for a four hundred and sixty. Uh, stu- the school for four hundred and sixty students. Um, and if uh if at all anything to be considered, it has to be scaled down significantly to work within the. The. The uh. Roadway structure and the roadway infrastructure that is located here, which actually does not help this site. It really is a difficult site for a school bus to be located. The school but across the street. Has a huge parking area. That's where all the drop off and the pickup and um. Waiting area is happening, so they are not that much affected by Bradley being. Uh, a roadway with one moving lane and with no um parking lane. But this particular site cannot use that as an example and say because the school is located across the street. Uh, such should be allowed here. A school may be allowed here, but that doesn't mean it should affect the vehicular traffic flow of the roadway. Um, for that reason, and it those need to be factored in 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 our consideration. So I I think, and I know this, this is the second um iteration. Uh, no, this is the third iteration. The second iteration, the synagogue and other house of worship elements were uh removed. But uh, the the school's capacity is really becoming the main issue because of the um. Uh, of the turn, number of vehicles that will be coming. And again, the non-use of carpooling is not realistic. Uh. Uh, on a day like this today, I can see parents wanting to drop their kids off right at the doorsteps, so um. I I'm very concerned about that part of it. And that I don't think it has been set sent to D O T or D E P for equality. Uh, Ms. Um, Ms. Benke. Can you confirm that has been sent to other agencies, the revised plan?
No, it has not. We are waiting to see the board.
Yeah, yeah, I wanted to get a sense from the board where you thought this plan would go. Based on that, we would either send it to D O T or the or direct the applicant to consider something else. And I think what I'm gathering is this is not the one to be sent to D O T or to D E P.
I just wanna clarify.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Penga.
Sorry, I just wanna clarify something. Um, we did send it back in August, so we have an August letter from twenty twenty four. So we didn't send this.
Right.
Iteration. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Item number twenty four, twenty twenty four oh nine B Z, four oh one Park Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay, so this is a legalization of an existing school that is operating in a facility that was uh um. To be used for a trade school. Now, um, we also have an opposition council on this and we received an extensive doc tech memo from the opposition council. Um, and the applicant has responded to opposition council's tech memo. I hope everybody had a chance to review it. Um. Applicant states regarding noise pollution that um. That the attenuation is warranted for this project site and based on C C R standards and ambient noise level. Uh, a window wall attenuation of thirty one D B A along the southern facade and on the east facade. Um, and on the west facade for a for up to a length of fifty foot from uh from the south side would require noise attenuation. Um, it is not uh something that would be required of the neighboring sites, but it would be required of the school. Uh, regarding the adverse effect of air emission. Uh, the applicant states that it recommends a closed window condition and restricting air intake vent locations to address N O two. And particulate emissions majority is from molten salt. Now, based on the E A S documents, it would affect Assembly Space number one forty three above the first floor. And along the northern and western facade um and western storage room ten A and ten one oh six B. Uh, the section in the plan said do not clarify the height of the assembly space, so please do provide a cross section through the assembly space. To better understand the height of the assembly area and the specific recommendations that is being made. Also, the roof plan is incorrect as it include excludes the storage room located on the first floor along the western lot line, so please revise that. Regarding um D O T school safety recommendations that the uh that school safety mitigation measures be installed as soon as possible. Including improvements to sidewalks, ped ramps. Now, board will consider school safety recommendation once the board has completed its review and and approves the application. Typically, agency recommendations and um. Will be are made part of board's condition, which the. will be uh are made part of board's uh condition, uh which the applicant will be required to implement post uh approval within a prescribed timeframe. Um, so I think it's premature for the applicant to go ahead and do something when the board has not at all come to any decision or um or even a closure on uh if this site is appropriate for a school. Uh, school safeties uh uh also suggest uh that um crossing guards uh be provided and it's asking for improvements, um especially along Taffey Street. I have to say, I I went by that site and I did notice uh school buses that were parked partially on the sidewalk and partially on the street on Taffey Street. Now, it is my understanding the subject school, um, the the school that is operating at the subject site does not rely on any school bus service. So I I do not know whose school buses those are. But um I think it would be of benefit to the applicant if they can work with the um, the school operators that are parking on the sidewalk and uh and to locate it somewhere else because in so unfortunately, it's kind of affecting the subject site, even though it's not your school bus. Uh, the applicant has also submitted a revised plan, statement of facts, and the letter from the broker regarding the site selection to address finding A. Um. In its four twenty-eight uh cover letter, the applicant states that the additional ramp on the first floor of uh four stairs uh located um on the westerly hallway on the first floor are now shown as ramps to further facilitate ADA mobility. I have to say that in light of the disclosed emission level, which is high along the western and northern lot line, um, it is not the place where schools should consider locating an ADA accessibility um uh point. So um while the threshold requirement uh of uh site selection, I I think one of the site selection elements has been responded to. I'm okay with that, but uh, I am just overall concerned about how the adverse air quality impact uh the students are going to uh that would require a complete closed window condition pretty much for the entirety of the site. Um, can be operated and will not have an adverse impact on the quality of the student and who are going to be exposed to uh any of the um uh emission that is coming from the abating use, which is an asofright use. Um. Vice Chair Shabata.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, while I do appreciate the uh applicant's um uh response, I do still have the same concerns with regard to air quality that I had in the November nineteenth hearing. I don't believe that that uh, I just don't believe that that this is the safest site for children to be attending school regardless of what conditions they can do on premises. There still is this fact that these children will be outside of the school and subject to this very um this uh very uh noxious air quality that has been uh determined and flagged to us by DEP. Um, and I just don't think that I'm comfortable at this point uh um with this project going forward as a school.
Uh, Commissioner Hartley Brown?
So I think there's a nuance here that I just want to bring to the board, which is that this is a legalization, which means the school is already operating and operating outside of the law. And so I think here is the chance for the B S A and New York City to actually have the opportunity to monitor and control what goes on at this site. But we also have to recognize that in so doing, we also have to work with the fact that the site is there and kind of improve the conditions to as high a level of safety as we possibly can um assume. And so I'm more in line with working with them on increasing the capability of their ventilation systems to be able to handle the pollutants in the air rather than to just dismiss this case outright and say they're not there and I don't think they can make it. Because the fact is, they're going to still be here. Even if we were to decline this application, they would just be operating outside of the law, which would benefit no one, least of all the children. So I would want us to be a little bit more patient with them in searching for the right solution to ensure that at least the children win in this case.
I I respect your recommendation and I would like to believe that that is possible. Um, and and is implementable. And uh, I have not yet received any assurance of the applicant's ability to do uh to correct the wrong. And that is why I am positive.
I I I do have a question. If if we do not approve this, would it would it eventually the deal be closed aside down?
It's not the it it eventually, but it's as Commissioner Hartley Brown, the reality is it it doesn't happen overnight. And this, you know, it's a long drawn out process and in 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 that, she's right. Children are going to be exposed, but I also do not want to be used that as a threat and push the board to come to a conclusion that may not work and we may have to accept uh um a a a lower standard just to get something better than nothing.
No, I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting that we work.
I know you're not.
Bring the standards up as far as we can. I'm not suggesting that we just let what happened happens and let's just go to sleep at night and make believe we didn't see it. Not at all. And I have never stood for that ever on this board.
I know that.
You know, we have to ensure that they operate legally and but I think that this is going to take time. Having been here and seen many schools that were operating illegally, we have worked, sometimes you have to work for a year or even more with them to get the standards up as high as you can. And the work involves the other agencies that are in charge of issuing approvals, not just the board. And you have to work in tandem to slowly bring the school around to your vision of what their operating capabilities could be. And that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay. Uh, I hear you loud and clear and I think that if if applicant is willing to work with us to get to that higher standard to ensure that the site will operate absolutely uh in the most safest, highest safe uh condition, I'm willing to consider that. But applicant has not provided any such willingness yet so far. And uh and that is problematic. And I also want to make it known to applicants, those who think they can come before us to legalize a school building just because uh we are trying to, you know, we are trying to uh cure the cause. It has to be at a price. And if that means you have to put in and go extra mile and extra year to get this all done to the exact standard of what the agency requires, so be it. But that's a price the the organization or the entity should be willing to take the responsibility and do it because it is for the best of the children. And the well-being of the children. Okay. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I did read the opposition submission and I did read the response from the applicant's uh engineer to that opposition submission. I I have to say that I'm I'm really concerned about what I read. I don't think this is the right location for a school. But considering this is already existing school, I I I believe we should look at what they can do. But I'm not sure if they can do much, even if they implement the strongest and the most stringent uh like tools to to make sure that the inside of the school is is clean air environment. I'm not sure when kids go out and stay outside for, let's say, fifteen minutes. And 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 the conditions are not similar to the ones inside. I I I don't know how it's gonna go. I I really urge the school to find another location and and work on like getting moved to that location soon. But for I I don't see this site location as as appropriate for a school. Uh, that's that's my position right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. Um, I used to live in this neighborhood um on Taffey and further down, and I am pretty familiar with this area. It is a, it is definitely, when you cross Park Avenue, it is a manufacturing feel to the um the whole area, but I do recognize that the neighborhood is, the community has a need and um and I know that there's a, there's a large community that is expanding very nearby that needs a place to place a school. So I'm I'm basically on the fence because I understand that there's traffic concerns and pedestrian safety concerns because of the high intensity manufacturing uses around. Um, but I also understand the proximity to a community that has a need. The air quality um concerns. I suppose I need more information or more of a perhaps a narrative explanation of how one can actually make this a truly safe space for people to spend the majority of their week. It's a really tough site for a lot of reasons. Um. And I think all of that has been talked about. We're clearly kind of going down the middle here. Um, I'm not convinced yet, but I also am not convinced that it's impossible either.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Item number twenty-five, twenty twenty-four twenty-seven B C with a companion case of fifty-five dash twelve B C, seven twenty-six Wythe Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay, um, this is an enlargement of an existing school. Um, the applicant has made its submission in response to the comments that were raised at the last hearing. So with regards to the play area, um, according to the report, um, the play uh area, um the the, well, ac- according to repair prepared, bah. According to the area report prepared by the architect, it says that the school will need to use the public outdoor space during recess. And now, um, what I would like the applicant to clarify, is it the same as the playground that is across Penn Street? Um, as stated in the cover letter, um, and at the last hearing, the applicant had stated that Penn Street will be closed for a duration of time. And will that be from eleven A M to three P M, which is the play area um time period? So um, there is a little bit of inconsistency in between the documents and uh statements that were made. Um, so please do provide clarity on that. Uh, with uh regards um to um uh the information that has been provided, I need some clarity. Uh, according to the transportation schedule, twenty buses are used and will be used. Uh, will the pickup and the drop off, uh, will it continue to operate from um the from the Wythe Avenue frontage? The previous approved plan was based on fifteen buses. Now, according to Google area uh aerial, it seems at a time there are six buses that are parked along White Street, which was also evident from my site visits on a weekend that there were uh six buses that were parked uh along White Street. Um, with regards to waste management plan, uh, uh, the applicant is proposing an operational measure to include ten commercial-grade tra- trash bins located along Penn Street. Um. Uh, that and not in within the building. Uh, the the operational plan states that pre-collection days are Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And the collection days are Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. So garbage uh will be placed um in garbage bags uh by the curb side uh, which would be the corner of Penn and uh Wythe uh between three A M and seven P M in a heavy-duty opaque plastic bag. And before the students arrive next morning, the building manager will wash the bins as necessary and ensure the area is clean uh and wash the sidewalk if necessary. So the part of the waste management plan, as stated, um, is being in my my question is if that is being implemented? For uh, from reading the operational plan, um, I'm coming to the conclusion is that for five hours, the garbage will be placed outside. Outside those commercial bins, they will be on the sidewalk for five hours. This would amount to a heap of sixty bags at the corner of Penn and Wythe Avenue. And um, it 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 is the current current condition, so I'm not sure it is correcting the current condition. Um, school pickup hours are between three fifteen P M for preschool and six forty P M for eighth grade. And ninety percent of the students take school bus. So twenty buses will be picking up students from Wythe Avenue. And fourteen to sixteen buses will be using the curb side. Now, if Penn is used for play area from eleven A M to three P M, followed by placing garbage at the curb side of uh Penn till seven P M, it will make ped and traffic circulation almost not possible uh for most of the day along Penn. As it is evident from Google Street View, the trash is spilling over onto the street. And also the crash data provided in the E A S shows that the intersections around the school, including the intersection of Wythe and Penn, have had the uh, it has had a ped and bike-related accidents. So the applicant needs to provide another alternative that will contain the trash within the building and not on the city sidewalk. And photos that were provided of the interior space, I'm not sure what message it was trying to send. Um, but with the expansion of the school, more spaces can be uh allocated uh in a way and used in a way um that uh allows for uh storage of garbage within the site. And um I would say when I had gone on a site visit, um, I went, I was there Friday at six thirty P M. So I did see heaps of garbage uh bags that were uh are located at the Wythen Penn, but and also a lot of empty boxes um on the sidewalk that and it was blocking almost one entire lane of uh Penn Street. Now, then um I happened to also be there on a Saturday morning and I did notice the trash was removed, but there was a lot of residue that remained littered on the sidewalk and the street. So um, if the current operation plan as proposed, implemented, it is definitely not addressing the concerns that has been raised by the board. And I I understand that this enlargement is not going to increase the enrollment capacity, but that doesn't mean the board cannot correct the wrong of the prior actions. Um, with regards to sound attenuation, E A S analysis did not reference the sound mitigation that is required for the existing building. The analysis made no recommendations regarding the enlargement. E A S did not provide any analysis for rooftop play area. It only refers to providing a ten-foot-high acoustical fence without any rating adequate uh, any ready, any uh S T C rating for the uh attenuating um uh fence. The plan note only states a ten-foot-high chain link fence, acoustical fence, and rating has not been stated in the plan. So the documents uh need to be consistent. Though prior approved plan required mitigation of thirty-six windows on second facade, second-floor facade to maintain an interior noise level of forty-five D B A, twenty-four uh windows to provide O I T C rating of thirty-one D B A and twelve windows uh would be required to provide O T C rating of twenty-nine D B A with alternate means of ventilation, applicant has not confirmed if the required sound attenuation has been met. Also, as stated at the last hearing, a study should be provided to justify why a sound attenuation for the proposed and the existing building is not needed. And I also did not see any compliance chart of the prior board conditions um that indicate if all the prior conditions have been compliant with. So there is a lot of uh really outstanding issues, even though the enlargement may not be a significant matter, but prior um attenuation requirements, uh waste management requirement, traffic, uh, they, those need to be responded to. Um, Vice Chair Shabata?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I uh I agree with all your comments. I just wanted to note, uh, um just to the extent to add to one comment about waste management. If you check on the Google Maps and you go all the way back to May twenty-twelve, those that trash piled up on the side of the sidewalk and includes, um, you'll also find that in January of twenty thirteen. You'll find that in July of 2019, the same condition of lots of trash bins just piled along the side of the street on, where Penn Street and White Street meet. This, this, for this still to be the case today, although before the board, really concerns us about how they plan on truly addressing the issues moving forward, rather than continuing to have this type of toxic condition.
Thank you. Yeah, and, and the operational plan as proposed doesn't seem to resolve that issue.
No, it, it, it just, it simply says, we're going to put it in bins and then we'll go clean the bins up later. That doesn't, it doesn't seem to have an active.
Right. And, and placing the bin on the same sidewalk where the garbage is, it's going to, it's going to narrow the sidewalk for pedestrians to walk through.
And you're just going to raise the trash up higher to the windows and air conditioning units where the children are, and the rooms are in.
Okay. Commissioner Hartley-Brown.
Well, to add to it, I think that we on the board have to be very firm in our insistence that the trash be stored inside. And the trash be stored inside, preferably in a refrigerated trash room. And I looked at the photos that were submitted. And from my perspective, it looked like badly managed space. So it looked like if one were neater and one really wanted to economically fill up the spaces that they had and preserve one of those rooms and create a refrigerated trash room, they could, simply by being more organized in the placement of the items that they put in the other storage rooms. And showing us rooms where things are thrown haphazardly on the floor, on some of the shelves, is not going to convince me that there's no room in that cellar to convert one of the storage rooms to a refrigerated trash room. And so I'm not convinced that they can't find a way to operationally manage their garbage while also doing less harm to the neighborhood that they're located in.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with you, with your comments. I thought that when you spoke about the tents, the acoustical fence around the play area, I, I thought you, you meant that the capacity, the rating capacity or the attenuation capacity of the fence is not shown in the, in the plan. I, I, I would ask them to show that not just the capacity, but the capacity and the specifications of that fence as well. In addition, I agree that, that this is, this is a big facility. They, they have.
Commissioner Sheta, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you speak a little more clearly, please?
Sure. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Should I start from the beginning?
Yes, please.
Please.
Yes, I, I thought, I agree with Chair's comments. I, I thought when she indicated, when she spoke about the, the fence around the play area, the acoustical fence, she meant that the attenuation capacity of that fence is not shown in the drawings. I would ask the applicant to show not just the attenuation capacity, but also the specifications, full specifications. And if we can provide a cut sheet for that fence, that would be helpful too. In addition to this, regarding the waste management, I believe, yes, they should provide a storage inside the facility, not outside. That would be like less impactful to the, the neighbors, to the pedestrians and, and, and to everybody else in the area. Thank you.
I would also say that, you know, instead of doing every alternate day pickup, maybe the, the school generates so much trash, you probably need to do it every day pickup. There, there are many ways of resolving this in addition to storing it indoors. So you minimize the demand of, of storing it in the building for two or three days for, for however many students that you're going to serve. Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. I agree with everything that's been said. My biggest concern was the outdoor storage of garbage, which I think has been addressed. I agree also with Commissioner Hartley-Brown that the photos submitted did not convince me that you couldn't make the space. And I just think it's an enormous amount of garbage that really affects the neighborhood. And that should be addressed in this application. I had asked a bit about Penn Street and the playground last time. They gave an explanation that the play area, play area on the roof will accommodate 1,900 approximately of the 2,600 students. They still need the playground on Penn Street, which I accepted. So my only real concern right now is finding a solution for the garbage.
I, I think for me now, it's becoming Penn Street being used not only for playground, but also for trash and children playing around it. Everything is adding up to a situation where it, it, there needs to be a different solution. The trash has to be somewhere else. And if you really want children to play in that area. All right. Thank you.
Item number 26, 2024-41BZ, 10539 Cross Bay Boulevard, Queens.
All right. Applicant has made its submission in response to the comments that were raised at the last hearing. Applicant was asked to provide an as-of-right development based on adopted ZHO regulations. And the proposal would result in two residential buildings, totaling 22 dwelling units, one fronting on Cross Bay Boulevard, another one on 95th Street. In the cover letter, page six, with that the existing shallow depth is not viable depth and, and in that the letter states that, quote, "If the site were, if the site was deeper, it might well accommodate two rows of residential homes, one on Cross Bay and one on 95th." Well, I would say the revised as-of-right plan based on adopted ZHO did facilitate such a development. And the question is, is such an as-of-right development would allow for a reasonable return? So do revise the statements. And I saw it actually mentioned in many other locations in the neighborhood, sorry, in the uniqueness study also. So the, the argument that has been presented, it, it, it has been, it's not being, it does not get supported by the ZHO application. Now, applicant also provided sample BZ cases. The statement of fact refers to board precedents where board had relied on history of use of the site due to locational constraints and functional obsolescence of existing buildings as a basis for determining unique physical conditions and practical difficulties and hardship. Now, when citing cases, applicant must provide the resolutions which were not provided. I, our website afforded me to access them, but we should not be relying on that there because these are documents that are public documents and anybody can foil it and they should be able to access these documents. Upon review of four cited cases, in three of the cases, the non-conforming existing buildings were being reused and in one case vertically enlarged. It was not a tear down. Now, the only case, 65-07BZ, while that case bears some similarity with the subject case, it was denied by the board. On similar grounds, the board had raised concerns about the subject site. So I will strongly ask that the applicant to review the resolutions before they're submitted. And what is concerning is that the applicant's statement is misleading and false. I don't believe these cases help. In denying 65-07BZ, I'm going to quote from the resolution, "Board further notes that the applicant has failed to prove that this intersection is significantly more active than numerous others within the area." In the subject case, it's the heavily trafficked arterial highway of Cross Bay Boulevard. And that "expanding the definition of uniqueness to include the location of a lot at a busy intersection in a city with innumerable busy intersections is contrary to the definition of what is unique." Unquote. Board was not persuaded by the site's location and constituted, constituted a unique physical condition, creating an unnecessary hardship and conforming with the board's zoning requirements. So again, I could go through various sections of this report and indicate how this would be contrary to what the applicant is trying to argue. So please do review these documents before you submit it. And because it's not helping the arguments. Overall, I wasn't convinced by the BZ cases because they were very different. As I mentioned, the three of them were enlargement of an existing. It was not a tear down. So with regards to the uniqueness of the site, while it may be the only large lot that has a commercial use and is a through lot without a commercial overlay, the exceptional configuration is not a hardship under the city of yes. In the case of 146-96, Guyart Brewer Boulevard, which is 65-07BZ case, with regards to the site planning constraints, board found that, quote, "Lot is substantially sized such that it does not impose any site planning constraints that inhibit the construction of a conforming development." Unquote. And as it has been demonstrated in the ZHO adopted, the ZHO regulation, which, which, based on which the as-of-right multifamily use has been submitted. The difference between the Guyart Brewer site and the subject site is that from the intersection of Liberty Avenue and Rockaway Boulevard up to 107th Avenue, the frontage of Cross Bay Boulevard is predominantly developed with mix of ground-floor commercial use with residential use above, especially in the commercial overlay portion, which is mapped till 107th Avenue on the west side of the Boulevard and 150 feet on the east side of the Boulevard, though the commercial use does extend past 107th Avenue towards 108th for a bit. Given the build context within the block front from Rockaway Boulevard to 107th Avenue and the allowance that has been provided in the city of yes, mix of commercial and residential use can't be overlooked in assessing the hardship. So moving on to the obsolescence of the existing building, I would say the obsolescence response was much, much more detailed and outlined than we previously received. And it did outline some of the critical differences, especially the need for refrigeration system, more storage, and inefficient layout. And that a workspace of over certain amount needs to be ADA compliant. I though would like the applicant to provide the applicable building code section that requires it. I though was not convinced with regards to the difficulty in making the first floor ADA accessible from the street level because it's a 30-inch up and a ramp can't accommodate it. But the other elements of the obsolescence were better argued and, and, and were helpful. Now, with regards to the financial, I'm not sure why there were two different land sales prices that were provided, one for in as-of-right two-family development and one for as-of-right multifamily development. Why would that differ? I have also another question that is, the cap rate that has been used for as-of-right multifamily is 6%. Is that a reasonable, when the cap rate for the proposed is 5.3%? With regards to the neighborhood character, given the build context and the allowance provided in city of yes, a mix of commercial and residential development is not something that I can overlook. And the applicant needs to work through it to justify why it cannot be through any, it's infeasibility. So with regards to minimal, if the historic use needs need to be preserved, then consider an eating and drinking use other than a drive-through. Business model of Poyo Campero is predominantly storefront, except for two that are located in a shopping mall. So the ask for a standalone drive-through eating and drinking is a business decision and not a programmatic need. Of a drive-through can't be a hardship and driving the narrative. So I, applicant needs to look at an alternative if they want to retain the historic presence using a combination of residential, commercial, or another kind of eating and drinking establishment. Vice Chair Shabata.
Thank you, Chair. I think, thank you for your very thorough review. I, I don't want to be repetitive, but I did want to state that I also had the question of whether or not the request for the drive-through was the main factor that are pushing the variance. Other than that, I agree with your statements and I really look, I see that the, the applicant team is here and I hope for a, a response as to the questions that you stated. Nothing further.
Thank you. Commissioner Hartley-Brown.
So I'll start with, with A, the uniqueness finding part two, I call it, because it's another look at the uniqueness finding and a fleshing out of certain of their assertions. And I would say probably out of all the things that they've stated, the functional obsolescence of the building, its outdated layout, accessibility issues for employees, operational inefficiencies, and the cost of upgrading it is the most persuasive to me out of all of those. I don't look at location, especially in a first pass because Doug Liston shows us that we should not be considering solely location as the basis for a variance. It could be considered in conjunction with other features of uniqueness, but it can't be the sole or main feature of uniqueness. So I dismiss that. I'm a little bothered that when you looked at the statement, they're still comparing this site to three other sites on Cross Bay Boulevard and stating that this site is like them only having one frontage because it's not. This is a through lot and it has an advantage over the other three sites. And I believe I mentioned that the first time around. And I'm surprised that that hasn't been corrected. This should be analyzed as if it's a through lot, even if it isn't as deep as a traditional through lot. But it is a through lot. It does have two frontages. One of the frontages is on a predominantly residential street. And so I think that needs to be acknowledged here. Also, I want to then jump from, from A to C, actually because C in a way is very important here. We're sitting at a crucial time in New York City where there is a housing shortage. And for at least the past two administrations, plus this administration, the mayor has zeroed in, in each case, on how important it is for us to provide affordable housing and housing for the residents of New York City. There's very clearly a shortage. And this mayor has gone a little further than the other two mayors because he has actually tackled the zoning that has often made the provision of housing not feasible by increasing the amount of floor area that you could actually have if you fall into a geographic area where you're in a transit zone, which is what city government has been trying to encourage, which is development of residential and affordable residential in areas that are in a transit zone. This site is very clearly in a transit zone. It's one block from a subway that can take you into Manhattan. There are numerous bus lines that go just past this site. And so this is one of the prime areas where the city would like to encourage the development of housing. And because of that, I don't take very lightly the idea that we would just dismiss this site as a future location for residential, simply because we may want to put a business here. And the person who might be the applicant in this case really just wants to have commercial. I think we have to exhaust all of our other options before we get to commercial. I kind of liken this to the idea of building residential in, in a manufacturing zone, especially one of the highlighted, I forgot the name of the type of zone.
IBZ.
IBZ zone. Where we really have to look very clearly and exhaust all of the other possibilities before we actually do something that is so clearly against the initiatives of city government. And so that being said, that takes care of A and C from me. And now I'm going to go to B. I, I agree with the Chair that there needs to be a lesser variance scenario here, one that includes residential as well as commercial. I also agree with the Chair that a drive-through business should not be driving the case. It is not a programmatic need that we can recognize because this is a for-profit application. So therefore, I think they need to have a scenario that meshes the two, both residential and either community facility or commercial, and then show us whether or not that works. If it doesn't work, then you could take the step of considering a solely commercial project. So as for the individual comments about the different assumptions that are in the financials, I also was puzzled by the inclusion of a different site value for the multifamily versus the two-family homes and also the proposed. I think that once you introduce another site value, you're now comparing apples to oranges. It's not a. I think that once you introduce another site value, you're now comparing apples to oranges. It's not a simple comparison. And we never have allowed it before. We've always told applicants to stick with one site value and go through, not to mention the fact that we didn't question the site value to begin with. And we also always direct the applicant, please don't make changes to assumptions that we're not asking for changes to be made. Because then you're kind of very slowly destroying your credibility and we're starting to get the feeling that you're just throwing the numbers around any way you can to prove your case. That destroys your credibility over time, which I've said multiple times. Also, when you look at that second site value of the two million dollars and you look closely at it, it's based on comparables that are showing very viable buildings on the lot. Viable buildings that are improving on the value of an undeveloped site. So the comparables are based on improved lots with buildings that are likely to stay. And if you don't take off what you perceive the building value is from that sale, and yet you use that factor that you get to then uh multiply it by the max available building square footage to get a site value, you're double counting on your available building area because you're counting it to begin with when you're trying to figure out a land factor, and then you're counting the building again when you're multiplying it by the maximum available building area. And so then you end up with a site value that's too high. So in this case, there are two reasons why I'm adjusting to that second site value. Um, let's see. As for the two-family homes, I still have a comment that stands from before. They're still taking thirty percent off of the sales price due to the location with no proof that there is a discount of this kind at this time. So if you want to use that assumption, which to me is actually a very bold assumption to make, that you're taking off a third of a sales price because of its location, you have to provide a backup information about similar types of homes that are located on major thoroughfares compared to the same type of home that's located on a on a largely residential block and show the difference in the sales price to back up your assumption. So whenever you have an assumption that's very bold in terms of uh moving the value of what you're talking about by thirty percent or more, you got to back it up with information so that we feel as confident as you do in that assumption that you're making. I think that the construction costs are reasonable. And so my next comment is the comment about the cap rate that's used for the multifamily. New York City, in New York City, residential cap rates are the lowest cap rates that you see when you're looking at development deals. And so why should we accept a cap rate of six percent that's actually higher than the retail cap rate when we know that throughout the city, retail, especially first-floor retail, has been suffering greatly and probably is far riskier? So my question to you is when you go through this and you revise your application, if you're going to give us a purely residential scenario, it's got to have a lower cap rate to for it to be believable. So that's where I am right now, and I can't make a determination on B or E at this point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the thorough explanation on the financial. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I don't want to repeat myself, but I totally, I I thousand percent agree with Commissioner Brown regarding the the consideration of this site as a residential. Uh not something else if if the only way to do is to tear down the existing uh facility. Uh this is one thing. I I still believe that the applicant in pursuing this submission and and the option presented to us is 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 probably like intentionally downgrading this option by, for example, excluding building uh cellars or basements. And in their submission, they indicated that uh that simple, very simple, that 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 the construction of 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 a cellar is is not possible because of uh water table. I I I just want to, I don't want to laugh at this because the existing facility itself has has a cellar according to the submission of the applicant. And and I I did look at Google. I'm going to share my screen in one second. And and I did look at these three areas here. And if I just look at this, these two houses here. You see this window? It's for the cellar. Same thing here. We we do have a cellar here. Same exact for the other two areas. For this, this this house is immediately adjacent to the site. It actually has a cellar. So to and 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 what like makes me upset is I still see argument about the the uh L-shaped configuration of the site imposing hardship. I I don't think for them, this is this is general for any applicant. If we discuss something and we hit a conclusion on this something, it it shouldn't be repeated in the next submission. It shouldn't be argued again. We shouldn't be arguing the same thing over and over. That's that's exhausting, that the L-shaped thing was like on the table before, and we concluded that the L-shaped portion is not impacting that that development capabilities of the site, period. Still in this submission, there is an argument about the L-shaped configuration of the site. I I don't know why. Uh I I I'm open to consider like residential, probably with 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 a variance. If if it is proven that the the like that current proposal, when when they consider a basement or sub-seller, is is not enough to generate like reasonable return. If if they want to get some sort of like waiver in the height in in something else, I'm open to look into that. But the benefit from considering something like this is is like Commissioner Brown indicated. It jives with that administration uh intentions and initiatives. And it benefits, it really benefits the neighborhoods. So I I'm open to consider something like that, and I leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. I agree with everything that's been stated. Um I agree that if for the A finding, if anything would be considered, it is only the functional obsolescence. I agree with Commissioner Sheta that we clearly stated that the site shape uh was not a hardship, the L shape was not a hardship. So it was frustrating to read a kind of regurgitation or a lack of editing of things that we had addressed last time, um and I thought we had addressed it quite clearly. Uh I still don't believe there's a hardship with your site shape or location as I see it today. Also, Chair quoting that resolution sixty-five oh seven B Z about being in a city of innumerable busy intersections is contrary to the condition of what is unique. It's how I feel about building a multifamily residential building on a busy street anywhere in New York City. I think the as of right, um you need to try harder to convince us. I similarly uh questioned the statement several times that the water table was too high to actually build a cellar. You need to prove that. You can't just say it to us and expect that we're going to accept that. Um but if you are going to not have a cellar and you're going to put mechanical on the first floor, then deduct it from your zoning floor area and max out your envelope. Don't give us an as of right that doesn't take advantage of the zoning deductions that are available to you. You can build more units. I also questioned the site value. Um I think that's been covered. Uh I think that's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
I I believe that the water table issue is not provable, simply because the existing, the existing building has a cellar and that the house is next door, they have cellars too. So I I don't I don't know where from they got that. And I tried to find one of my like geotechnical reports in the area, but because like most of the areas like small buildings, I I don't recall doing like subsurface investigation there, but it it's not close to like waterfront or any waterways or something like that. And and the existing buildings around, including the existing building on site, they do have cellars. So it's, I don't know how they can prove that. But we'll see.
Thank you. I I think Commissioner Yun uh said a very good point, and that is if you are saying there's a high water table, prove it. And as Commissioner Yun pointed out, the Z H O also allows for greater amount of uh the city of yes allows for greater amount of mechanical deduction. So use that and put that to your uh uh to your advantage to provide housing. Um so there are many, many tools that are in the city of yes, uh housing toolkits, use it to prove it uh that it cannot be done before you jump to the conclusion that the only thing that is viable is a drive-through uh place. So again, as we are all saying, um it seems it's the drive-through that is, no pun intended, driving the hardship. And 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 it's not a programmatic need. Uh it's not a community facility. It's not a nonprofit use. It's a for-profit group, so for-profit use. So therefore, need to go through the rigor of the analysis to prove that uh uh any as of right use or even a lesser variance, a combination of commercial with residential is absolutely not viable and does not uh provide a reasonable return before a commercial use can be, a standalone commercial use can only be viable, uh can be considered. So and I I think Commissioner Artley Brown uh said a very good thing. It's the same level of rigor that we apply when a residential use is being proposed in an IBZ location. It's the reverse of it, especially in light of city of yes. And uh and every effort that every administration for the last uh I I would say since Bloomberg administration down till now and yeah, and the most rigor that has been put in under this administration shows that city of yes cannot be overlooked and ignored. It has to be considered before we can consider it absolutely not viable and practical for this site. So if you want to stick around, you need to go through all this exercise to prove, convince the board that there is nothing that can be built on this site. Only thing that can be built is a standalone commercial use.
And and even even if the water table on this site is is high, I I this is just an an idea. Even if the water table is kind of high on the on the site like this, and and putting a ten feet deep cellar is not possible, I would consider putting a basement to less excavation and probably utilize this basement as a residential. And and then if you need some some extra height, we could consider that like I indicated.
Get into detail. Let's not get into that detail. Let the applicant figure out the base, what they what they're willing to consider. And we have given them all the possible tools. And so let them figure it out. I don't want to out the plan for them.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate all your hmm.
I was gonna say, we don't need to speculate what an E finding would be on an A finding that hasn't been proven yet.
Exactly. Yeah, um I really want to thank the board for doing your thorough review and coming to your own conclusions. For for each one of these cases, I'm I'm quite uh uh I'm I'm appreciative of it. Okay.
New cases, item number twenty-seven, twenty-two-five oh four B Z thirty-seven dash eighteen hundred thirty-eight Street Queens.
Okay, so we received proof of initial filing and hearing notices. Uh Committee Board seven has not voted on this. I believe that they are scheduled to vote in May of twelfth. Uh this is an application for a special permit pursuant to zoning resolution section seventy-three dash sixty-six to develop an as-of-right use which exceeds the height regulations around the airport. Um the applicant did provide an aeronautical study uh prepared by F A N A, which is always a very thorough and precise. Um and per zoning resolution section sixty-one dash forty-two allowable height is hundred and sixty-eight feet, and the proposed development on the subject site will exceed that allowable allowable height. We did receive FAA determination for seven points uh of the building and the maximum height that would be permitted at the bulkhead, which is the highest point of this building, would be two hundred and fourteen feet NAVD eighty-eight. Um uh sorry, AMSL NAVD eighty-eight. Uh Port Authority of New York and New Jersey also raised no objection uh regarding uh the proposal. Uh I do have one comment on the drawings in the FAA drawing. That is the latest. We have two sets of drawings. I am only referring to the last drawings set, which is uh referred to as FAA drawing. In the FAA drawing, B S A draw a page, uh B S A oh four, section two is bit confusing and does not match with B S A oh five. Um the heights uh that are stated for the parapets, the bulkhead, um for the um height above the light, um those are not matching. And according to section two, the bulkhead exceeds the maximum permitted height of two hundred and fourteen at the bulkhead. So that needs to be revised and needs to be concerned. It's, I know it's a it's a zoom-in version of the elevation. That's why I'm referring to B S A oh five. So it has to be a zoom-in version of of what's there uh on the B S A oh five specifying the maximum height and how the maximum highest point of two hundred and fourteen feet is not going to be encroached by the even the um safety light. I have no additional questions. That was the only thing. And um otherwise, the application application seems to be fine. Uh Vice Chair Chabata.
Thank you, Chair. I have no applica- no questions for this application.
Okay, thank you. Uh Commissioner Artley Brown.
I have no additional questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I uh the the only comments I have, I'm not sure if you were you were talking about the right B S A five. Uh B S A zero five is the plan with the airport runway and the service contours. Is that what you're referring to?
Uh I am referring to the, hold on, I am, let me just.
I think.
I can't, I can share it.
It's the FAA drawing. It was submitted on twenty-two-five oh four twenty-four. That's the latest drawing sheet I I'm referring to. I'm not referring to the initial submission.
This one?
No, 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 no. It it was, it was submitted on.
April twenty-fourth.
Oh, it's an older submission. Okay, my apologies. Okay.
April twenty-fourth, yeah. And if you go to um.
FAA drawings twenty-two-five oh four in the application folder. So it's in the application folder. It says twenty-two-five oh four two four four FAA drawings twenty-two-five oh four B Z PDF.
Okay, I I.
Yeah, the section through the bulkhead uh represents incorrect um heights, and it needs to be consistent with the FAA directives and the rest of the plans. Other than that, I have I I have no comments of this.
Understood. Okay. My my first comment is 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 that that like the detail for the light is not that great, so I would urge them to make it more clear. The light, the FAA light is is one of the important elements in reviewing these applications. So I would urge them to make it like more uh visible, I would say, or may noticeable to to whoever looks at uh at the draw. So this is this is my first uh my first comment. The second comment, if if I go all the way to B S A fourteen, and if you look at the FAA determination sheets, you're gonna see that one of the submitted info to FAA, and this is one of the bases for the determinations actually, is what is called site elevations. And and site elevation should be the elevations at the determination point uh at the subject site. So what I did is I took this plan and I overlain this plan on top of the uh survey, which is given in the background at the very beginning of this uh plan set. And and I looked at the spot elevations. This is what engineers do. And I grabbed the spot elevations. And I compared them to what is submitted to FAA. And then I got shocked, scared, because I found like discrepancies up to five feet. And then I said, oh, I'm I was crying for them. They need to resubmit to. But at the end, I realized that what they submitted to FAA, and thanks God, that's a good news for them, is is and what they call it average curb level, and it's located at elevation seventeen. This is uh, this is the base elevation where they are measuring the building height from. So that's good. You don't need to change anything uh with with respect to submitting to FAA. So that's gonna save them time. But what I'm asking them to do is is actually two things. Number one, if you look at the identifications here, N E S E, S E two, and so on. And if you look at the table, they are different. Please either change the table to match the plan or change the plan to match the table. This is number one. Number two, I would ask them to like make it more clear to people who are not like, who are naive like me, not to get like. who are naive like me, not to get like tricked by this. Put some sort of note and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna read out my, my suggested note. Give me one second, I have it here. Put a note that says that, that the site elevations submitted to FAA are referred to an average curb level at the subject site, which is located or which is identified as elevation 37 AMSL. By, by, by giving that note, you're, you're like diverting my attention from going to spot elevations in the topographic survey to actually one, one elevation, which is the, the average curb, like I said, of elevation 37. And that explains that when you look at them, why when you look at the table on BSA 14, all are 37s. When you look at the determination points, all are, are 37s again. So again, it's, it's, I, I was like, I was happy for them that they don't need to change anything with regard to submitting to FAA, but I'm asking them to add this note. And like I said, change that table or the plan to be consistent. You have the right to pick either. Thank you.
Commissioner Chetta, if you would send me that language, if the other commissioners are comfortable with it, I can forward it to the applicant to be included.
I have it. I will.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Yun?
My only comment was the same as yours, Chair, that that section showing the detail of the obstruction lights has completely different elevations than the rest of the project, which makes, which makes it confusing. So please correct that. On, on the FAA drawings that were submitted in April of this year, not, not on the February.
Yeah. Yeah, and we are going to use the FAA drawing that was submitted on April 25th as our formal drawing to be submitted to the DOB. Yeah. Uh, uh, unless whatever the revised drawing that comes, that would be the latest. I'm using this currently as the latest one, not the initial application, not the drawing that was submitted initially. So I just want everybody to be clear on that. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Benke, yes.
Hi, this is type two with prerequisites. And I just wanted to note, we did get a submission regarding that, the prerequisites, and we're reviewing to determine that they have been met. We're still under review, so.
All right. Thank you.
Chair.
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't see, I didn't see a signed and sealed survey in the submission. I'm not sure if I'm the only one who didn't see it. I understand that the spot elevations are in the background, in the first sheet in the plan set. But I would prefer to get a signed and sealed survey for a project like this because survey is, is very important for.
So the drawing sheet FAA one on page, I'll share, page BSA 03 does have a survey and it does provide the spot elevation.
Is it, is it, is it called survey?
Yeah. It, so this is part of the whole application.
Yes, 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 it's my bad. I didn't, yep, yep, hold on one sec.
I was looking at the elevations from this survey sheet. As I can see from the corner of 37th and 138, the elevation is 31.95.
Yep, professional land surveyor. I thought, I confused this stamp with the, with the, like the Arctic stamp. Yes, yes, I, I see. Yes, my, my bad. Thank you. We have it.
Okay, yes, we have it. Thank you. Yeah, this is a very minor change that can be corrected, but thank you. Well, we are at 11:55, so I'm gonna suggest, do you want to take a half an hour lunch break and then resume?
Sure.
So we will, it's 11:55, I'm gonna round it, make it 12:30. Okay?
12:30?
12:30, we will resume.
This concludes the review session for May 6, 2025. We'll resume at 12:30.
Who is that? What was that? Who are those people?
Commissioners, please ensure your microphones are on. Ms. Mathias, we are live. We are streaming. You may proceed with today's public hearing.
No, no, I am ready.
You're ready. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
My bad.
Start it.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. This is the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for May 6, 2025. We'll begin with the zoning calendar, continued hearing items, item number 22, 2024, 18 BZ, 15805, Union Turnpike Queens. Who's coming up? Elise.
The Commissioners turn on the cameras. Thank you.
Cameras, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
It's mine?
I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, mine's on.
Yes, yours is.
It's a public hearing thing is on the screen. Got it? Or is it? She ran out?
I'm sorry, I.
It's okay. Okay, raise your right hand. Do you affirm, is anyone else joining you out there in the?
Oh, Josh will be online, Herman.
What is his name?
Josh Herman. He's a traffic engineer.
Okay, got him.
Only Josh, not Tom Whitney?
Oh, if he's there, he can come. I just, you had a specific question for Josh.
I just want to know who you wanted.
Oh, if he's there, you can let him in. If he's not there, then not necessary. Okay.
Okay. Okay, both of you, raise your right hands. Mr. Herman, please unmute. You have to unmute though, sir. There we go. Thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and not, and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
I do.
Name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
Elise Fullader from Eric Palanick PC. So nice to see you all today in real life. Sorry, Josh, but Josh's face is beautiful as well. So first, I guess I'll just, I answer your few questions about the notes on the plans and then I'll give it to Josh to respond to your question about the TDF memo. So apologies if the no left turns be permitted isn't in there. We will double check the plans and make sure that it is shown on the plans. We heard your comment about the notes on the plans about overflow of queuing. We'll review the record and make sure we have the language that you proposed. And then we will talk to Starbucks. Usually takes a few different people to talk to because it's a corporate about the line busting techniques and then we'll add that to the operational plans. So Josh, to you to explain your TDF memo.
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone, and nice to see you virtually. So I heard the question this morning about the pass by trip. So our TDF memo had utilized a factor of 50% pass by for weekday peak hours and 25% pass for pass by on Saturday peak hours. And the difference between the two is really just the general flow of traffic between weekdays and Saturdays. Well, first of all, that was in response to a comment that we had received from DOT as was noted this morning during the review session. But in, in general, you know, pass by traffic refers to traffic that's already on the roadways. That's, that's generated by a site. So, you know, on weekdays when people are commuting, typically commuting to and from work, picking up children from school en route somewhere else, they may pop into a Starbucks. So a larger percentage of traffic generated by a site would be considered pass by traffic. On a weekend when fewer people are commute commuting to work, when fewer people are taking their kids to school, things like that. The trip to a Starbucks may be considered unique. A higher percentage of trips to a Starbucks would be considered unique. So that's why there is a lower percentage utilized, which is seems like a reasonable rate.
So you specifically mentioned Starbucks. Now, this were a different kind of restaurant where wasn't solely relying on giving out morning coffees for everybody to go to work fresh and perked up to do the work for seven hours. For the other operations where they're relying on the middle of the day kind of thing, you know, I'm thinking of like Kentucky Fried Chicken. Like you're not going to go there for your morning coffee. You're going to go there for your afternoon chicken legs. So in that case, would you still be using 25% for weekend?
For a weekend? Well, yeah, because the similar, it would be different for different types of uses so that the amount of traffic generated by it by, let's say, a Kentucky Fried Chicken would be different compared to a, you know, in a morning peak hour versus an evening peak hour. But in terms of pass by traffic, you know, for, on a weekday, there are people are generally more active. They're going in to different places and they're stopping along their way to, to work to, to pick up kids, things of those nature. But for a Saturday, yeah, we would expect a lower percentage.
Even for.
For different.
But even for a Kentucky Fried Chicken, you're saying on a Saturday, you would consider still a lower than 50% for a Kentucky Fried Chicken?
Yeah, I think that would be reasonable, given that people are on their way to other places, but a lesser percentage. So there are more people on a Saturday than a weekday that are, that are going to the Kentucky Fried Chicken specifically for a meal, whereas on a weekday, they would be passing by and popping in on their way somewhere else.
I just want to make sure that's an acceptable balance amongst the traffic consultants out there who are practicing this.
Yeah, I think that that would be a reasonable assumption.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I was just going to say, why are we deviating from the secret manual? But if this is an acceptable, reasonable assumption, I am not going to question.
Yeah, and, and the secret manual, I, I don't have it up in front of me, but it's, it's up to 50%, but allows for a difference between different types of uses. So that's, you know, one of the reasons as well. And this is more conservative, a more conservative assumption using 25%.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Go ahead.
I think that answers all the questions and that we just need to hear back from DOT and however long you think we need until that happens is what, you know.
I didn't hear.
Oh, I said, however long you think we need for that is the, probably the next step and we.
Well, you know, I, a huge shout out to my team.
Definitely.
They are constantly working with the city agencies to get the response. And in this case, it's a DOT. And I wanted some of these clarifications because it also helps us understand where DOT is coming from and where we can push and pull the decision and discussion. So the clarification is being provided, especially in this document that was provided was very helpful. And we can, our, our team can be more effective in, in guiding and directing the kind of information we are looking for. And, and tailoring into what this action is, it's a drive through action. It's not, you know, so we are trying to keep everything in a very tight rope, on a tight rope and not making it.
No.
Yeah. So it's taking a lot of learning on, on everybody's part, but we are trying to get this information from you guys because you are the consultants. You have the expertise and, you know, you have something to benefit from it and we want to understand how you're arriving at it so that we can use that to kind of help facilitate the discussion and streamline the process.
And I shouldn't be saying on behalf of Josh, but I'm sure Josh is happy. If you need him at any point to answer any questions, he works on all the Starbucks and he's happy to.
We may.
To.
Right, Josh?
Sorry, I'm speaking.
No, no, you're.
I'm sure if you ever need him, you can answer any.
We may. Yeah, thank you. So with regards to the line busting, you will put together an operational plan based on discussions?
Yeah.
And you'll identify it also in the plan?
Sure, no problem. Yeah.
Okay. I think it would be helpful also when we discuss with, when our team discusses with DOT, they can also bring those factors into point that has been used and has been used successfully. And if it is being used in the foster site or in the CIP site, you know, it would be helpful to know that.
Okay.
I actually did find that your explanation of the use and the, why the size and all of that, very interesting, very helpful. And I know that probably does not work for KFCs. It may work for Starbucks because Starbucks can function just as a drive through and not always has a come. Like another case that we just approved, Hillside has a sit down and a drive. But Starbucks can operate both ways. So it's good to know. Thank you. Our project managers working with you, you know what the timeline is. You will go know the timeline from them. So.
Okay, no problem.
Any questions? For the, okay, let's go to the public.
Okay, the case that we're currently discussing is 2024, 18 BZ, 15805, Union Turnpike. Should you wish to discuss, dial 669-254-5252. At the prompt, you will enter the webinar ID number 1611848885 and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you'll press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute as you're calling in on the phone. Any of them in the Zoom room are ready, please raise a Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you're recognized, you'll have three minutes in which to discuss.
Ms. Benke?
Yes.
Was the revised plan and information as was sent to DOT, do we have any update on DOT?
Last we heard DOT, he was going to comment on the TDF memo and tell us if they approve of the assumptions or if they need a meeting and we're just, they said they would tell us soon.
This is where I think, Mr. Herman, you can help us to provide a like what, in this case, you specifically identified what are the assumptions would work? And why you therefore you picked for a foster over CIP? Now, I know DOT refers to the Starbucks on Amboy Road in Staten Island. What would be helpful to know is what is the difference between that site and the site that you have and, and, and the similarities or, or even with the foster site?
Yeah, so I would have to look into the Starbucks that you're referring to on Amboy Road a little bit more closely. But in terms of the Foster Avenue site, the, the average daily traffic along the, along Union Turnpike and Parsons Boulevard compared to the the average daily traffic along the site frontage on Foster Avenue is, is more comparable in terms of the number of seats that are provided. I don't have those handy in front of me, but they are much more comparable as well. So just looking at the daily traffic that's, that's along the site frontages, the, the amount of seating, the amount of parking that's provided, the two are much more closely related.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so no one has raised their hands. A call then?
No, nobody has. Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Fullader. It's good to see you in person.
Oh, yes, you too.
Item number 23, 2023, 59 BZ, 280 Bradley Avenue, Staten Island. Thank you, Mr. Herman.
Would be. Yeah, I see his hands right. Yeah, change him to.
Straighten that TV a little. All right.
You can't see?
No, no, I can see just a little. It's all right. It's all right. Don't, don't.
Good afternoon, everyone. How are you?
Are you expecting anyone else, anyone in your team? Just you?
Yep.
Do you affirm tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein, on behalf of the applicant. We heard the board's comments and we, we realize it's a work in progress. So what I would ask from the board is to first determine when, when when designing this driveway, we did work with bus companies and traffic consultants to see that the turning radius works. That's why we angled the rear of the building that's instead of having it as a, as a square at the first floor. So there, they do believe that the turning radius works. So before I endeavor to address the other comments of the board or perhaps reducing the scale of the school or reducing the amount of occupants in the school, I would like to have some feedback from DOT as to whether or not they think that having this driveway is feasible at all. So before we start reducing the number of buses, number of students or anything like that, I think it'd be helpful to see if DOT agrees with our assumptions on the actual driveway. And if they agree that the driveway is something that is workable, we can address the rest of the concerns accordingly.
Okay, I, I just want to, I, we do have other practitioners here in the room and I know there is a concern that is there in the amongst the practitioners that review time is taking a lot longer. I just want to be mindful is that you're requesting that this be go to DOT and DOT is going to require additional information. It is going to take whatever amount of time that it will require. And this is a PAS, it will require a DOT review. I just want to be very, very clear that it is a request you're making.
I just want to be very, very clear that it is a request you're making. And once DOT asks for information, it is what it is.
Right, I think this will have to ultimately, any iteration that we bring before the board has to go to DEP and DOT. We understand it and we are working on other projects with them as well where it's taking, you know, a while. Um, I appreciate that, that board staff is, uh, pushing and trying to find the solution to tax expedite things at DOT. And I appreciate their help on all of our cases. I think it's, in, instead of me going back to the drawing board, I think it makes more sense to see if this is an avenue that works as a starting point. Because we have modified the building to try and accommodate and try and respond to board's concerns. So I think that instead of, um, for lack of a better term, instead of betting against myself, let's see if this is an avenue that we can tweak. Because I think this is a solution that could potentially work for this building and whatever final occupancy we come up with.
You want to, you want to submit this plan the way it is to DOT with, with the buses, like, probably an inch away from hitting one of the columns in the back, two buses? I, I believe this is like you're, you're asking them to say it doesn't work. You don't want to go back to your designer and have him take a second look and reconsider. Maybe some reconfiguration, looking into the way the turning is, is done. And instead of like losing one round of, like submitting to DOT and then coming back with major changes and.
No, I appreciate the, the suggestion, but we did ask for a German on this because we were working on multiple different options to try and find the solution. We believe this is a solution that could work with whatever other changes or requirements are put into place. However, we, you know, if, if we have to reduce the size of the building, reduce the occupancy, it'll reduce the buses. So it could, you know, we may be able to find more space on the first floor, something along those lines. But if DOT is not going to, um, view this as a viable option regardless of how we present it. Then we know we need to find a different solution.
You want to submit it as a concept and then see what's their feedback?
Yeah, exactly. I'd like to submit this as our proposal and see what their comments are and have our consultants work with them to, to tweak it in any method necessary so that we can come up with a solution that works.
Okay.
I understand the timing and I appreciate the board's concern for our timing, but I think that's the. I think that'll be more fruitful because ultimately when we come back with another iteration, if we come back with another iteration, it'll have to go to DOT anyways. So at least we'll have the conversation started.
Well, you are, you're talking about possibly another iteration. What would be the other iteration? What is the worst case scenario outcome that you can come up with that would appease, that you think would, uh, would address most of the concerns that you've heard from the board? So far, why can't we just get to the?
Because I don't have a, another solution yet. This was after multiple, multiple attempts, this was the solution that seemed to work from our perspective.
Did you have your architect talk to your traffic consultant and coordinate with them? To see if, if the woods of the building here can be like, we maybe narrow it down a little bit to make a space for a wider.
Commissioner, I think, uh, Mr. Goldstein made it very clear, he wants to hear from DOT. And if commissioners, you're all okay with allowing DOT to give their opinion as to whether this is, uh, this is a, this is a possible solution. We can do that, but, um, but I'm not, I'm, I'm not going to bet on it that the outcome would be what you're looking for.
No, I'm not betting on anything. I'm just, we've gone through multiple iterations to try and find a solution. And this seems to be the only one in our minds from our, our consultations with the bus companies that work or that works. So that's why.
Um, so, Mr. Goldstein, I think what we all have been saying, yes, while this can accommodate six parking, uh, six buses. I think the issue is even all these six buses that are going to come here at a time and will be exiting in a period of thirty to forty-five minutes during the morning rush hour. Can Bradley Street accommodate that level of traffic? And I think DOT had expressed concern for that, on that part, even at the initial. So I, I will do that. I, I, I will follow your request and I'll let, let that be. But from what I'm seeing on the plan and what DOT had initially cited as a concern. I would strongly suggest that you work with your client to look at an alternate su- solution or a site. Because I don't think what you're proposing is going to eventually, um, going to meet the requirements, uh, uh. Or, or would, uh, would be, would work on this site. I'm just giving you a heads up.
No, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. I, DOT's initial comments also didn't contemplate the, the driveway. They contemplated us queuing on the street. So I'd like to have a conversation with them to figure out if there's an, if there is a. If this is a viable path, because if it's not a viable path, then, like you said, it may not be enough. It may not be an option for this site, but it's something that we have a site. And if we have to reduce the number of buses or, or something along those lines, reduce the number of students, then that's something we have to discuss internally. But for the time being, this was after all of our exploratory designs, this what worked.
Okay, all right. Um. We will send this to DOT for their opinion and we will put this application. I mean, I, we have to go to public anyway, so let's go to the public before we schedule time.
The case that we're currently discussing is twenty twenty-three fifty-nine BZ two eighty Bradley Avenue. Should you wish to discuss, dial six six nine two five four five two five two. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six one one eight four eight 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 five. And press the pound sign. At the following prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute as you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you are recognized, you will have three minutes in which to discuss. Okay?
Yeah, I'm running out of battery.
Oh, okay.
Nobody called in?
No one's raised their hands or called in.
Yeah. Okay, uh, this was scheduled for continued hearing. Um, please work closely, uh, with the project manager.
Will do. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good day.
Thanks.
Item number, thank you. Good to see you, Mr. Goldstein. Item number twenty-four, twenty twenty-four oh nine BZ four oh one Park Avenue.
Jordan Most, um, he has been added to the panel. Anyone else from your team? Kevin Williams.
Should we bring up the opposition, please?
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm trying to, uh.
The, uh, the, um.
Tom Wise.
Somewhere, yeah, thank you.
Is Tom Wise here? George Peters, I think he's the owner. Um, yeah.
Um, the person who's representing the opposition team, if you would please join us. If not, then, you know.
George Peters is the opposition attorney.
Oh, okay. I thought it was somebody else. Thank you, Ms. Pranga. Amber Cartlin, Cartelin, Cartelian.
Did you let him?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman.
And now.
Commissioners.
Good on.
There's a couple of other members of my team that I believe are in the lobby.
And, uh, what is your name?
My name is George Peters. I'm the attorney for Hercules Heat Treating Corporation and Rizzo Research Corp.
Members of your team, but just so you know, we're going to let the applicant, uh, engage with the board and move through their presentation before we call on the opposition.
Of course.
Uh, could you just identify the members of your team, please?
Erica Swanson is our traffic engineer, Michael Keane is our planner, and Anthony Rizzo, who is the owner of Hercules Heat Treating Corporation and Rizzo Research Corp.
There's no, I don't see Mr. Rizzo. Did he come in?
No, we did not see Mr. Rizzo.
All right, he might not be on at this time. I know, I know he was watching before, so worse comes to worse, we can make him available at a later date.
Okay. Okay, um, we're in, uh, Mr. Most and his team.
So I'm swearing in the applicant and his team. Oh, the, um, Mr. Peters, your hand is up again for some reason.
Oh, no, I don't think so, but I, I apologize.
Another person under George Peters' name?
I only see me on the screen.
Maybe it's his.
George Pete, this.
I, I don't know why there's a second one.
All right, just give us a moment, sir.
Anthony Rizzo.
Okay, so the property owner's here. Okay. Yeah, that's his name.
Okay, so we just want to.
Apologies, Mr. Rizzo. We, we can't permit you to attend while you're driving. We're just going to turn off your camera and mute you. And if you are in a safe position, you can, you can attend the hearing.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to swear in the applicant and his team. Raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the questions? Okay, please state your name for the record. Proceed to respond.
Swear a note for the record, Commissioner Sheta is now asked.
Okay, thank you. I was just going to do that. Thank you.
Jordan, you ready?
Yeah.
Jordan Most for the applicant.
Can you hear him? Was the volume?
Hear me okay?
Yeah, could you raise the volume maybe a bit or sit to the mic?
So I can, I can speak louder too. No one's ever accused me of, uh, not being able to hear me. So, uh, certainly with respect to the, uh, review session, we were in attendance and, uh, we can, uh, gladly make some clarification changes with respect to the, uh, plans regarding the assembly space and the height of the assembly space. The roof line, the chair pointed out, maybe something is incorrect with regard to the roof line. We'll check that and, and fix that, of course. Uh, and of course, uh, we continue to, I, I know there are school buses apparently in the area. It's been mentioned at pre- previous hearings and we'll make sure that the school is admonished that they shouldn't, that there. There are no school buses that go to this school, but that any school buses in the area shouldn't be parked, uh, at the site and certainly shouldn't be parked on the sidewalk, which is, uh, something I believe that would be addressed with a, uh, fixing of the sidewalk. Which is among the, the DOT, um, safety or, or obligations of the applicant to. Because I believe this, the, the curb and sidewalk are, if not flush, they're close to flush with the street and that they need to be different, better differentiated according to the regu- applicable regulations. So other than, I am happy to discuss any other points specifically with respect to, um, the application materials. I know the chair acknowledged that there, that you, that the board had received other materials, including an updated, uh, site evaluation. Alternative site evaluation study from Urban Cardographics and an updated broker's letter as well. But it certainly didn't seem that those were the issues that were paramount in the eyes of the board. So happy to, we are happy, the collective we, including, uh, GZA and Kevin Williams and Amber Cartelian. Happy to further respond to issues regarding air quality or transportation issues, which certainly the board spent.
Jordan, I, I can address the, the, uh, comments and then we can do follow up discussion. Kevin Williams, principal planner for GZA. So if I may, I'd like to, to, to make three, uh, statements before I get into some of the specific comments. So one, I appreciate the brevity, uh, with which the board approached the comments. They're sort of obvious at this point. We've been working on many years on them. The one thing that I want to state unequivocally here, uh, on behalf of my firm, the client. Is that we are willing to work with all parties with GZ, with, um, the BSA specifically, DEP and DOT. As well as Hercules to resolve any issues. And, and I think given the circumstances here, as I elaborate on, um, this, this process is warranted, a problem solving process. So I don't, I don't want the BSA to feel like we're not trying to be responsive. We, in fact, we have been engaging, you know, with your staff and with the DEP on the air quality matter quite extensively. We have come to a basic resolution with DOT, um, on the matters that we've identified. And we've made adjustments to our safety program, primarily to, to remove some elements from that program and, and instill sort of physical improvements. And I'd like to discuss those specifically. So A, we appreciate this notion that the safety measures requested by DOT not be implemented until we see a path forward. The, the aspect that the chair noted in terms of school bus parked on the sidewalk is indeed an issue. We flagged multiple years ago, um, and no, they are not a part of school operations, a part of area schools, which are present throughout the area. One of the things, however, that DOT has requested or required as a subject to the approval of this application is that the curb be restored at the responsibility of the school. B, that they issue a revocable consent through DOT to provide, uh, a series of measures to be determined, including bollards, street trees, tree pits, to prevent the mounting of, uh, buses or other vehicles on the sidewalk. In addition to establish a school no standing zone on the length of TAFE Place. So these measures will A, deal with the narrowness of the street and B, uh, reduce, uh, or eliminate the potential mounting of vehicles on the sidewalk and C, assure that there's a safe route for students to use TAFE Place to go, go to, uh, homes north of the project site. In terms of air quality, obviously, this is an issue. I mean, we have done many of these applications over the years. This is the most unique we have encountered. And, and that includes in all of the rezonings that we've done for city planning, special permits and the BSA. We have not encountered a site in an M1 zone, which is a high performance manufacturing zone, which is meant to coexist with adjacent sensitive land uses, including community facilities that are allowed as a right in this zone. Those performance standards as outlined in the materials we sent it, we submitted for both for Mr. Most and in our environmental responses indicate that per zoning, uh, uses in an M1 district must comply with strict performance standards that relate to air, noise, odor, particulate VOC emissions. Um, and that they cannot deleteriously affect human health beyond the lot line of the subject enterprise. And so we do appreciate Hercules acknowledging that they have concerns about their operations. This is something that has come up in our air quality monitoring. The background here is the unique aspect, DEP has a process by which air permits are issued individually for emission sources. This building has over ten separate permits for various emitting sources. Those are not analyzed cumulatively, they are analyzed individually. And that is resulting in the modeling, the modeling issues that we have where DEP indicated there's potentially an air emissions, uh, presence from Hercules that could impact human health on the sidewalk. One of the issues, why this is so important is there is a park directly across the street. There is a bustling residential zone, um, at the end of the block TAFE interfacing with Flushing Avenue, and there's PSIS 157, which is less than 250 feet away from Hercules operations. So we believe it is in the best interest of all parties here to remedy two problems. One, the operations of Hercules to assure that, you know, they're able to operate in these neighborhoods, continue to be successful employees, generate jobs, do the work that they do, and that the school is able to place itself safely here. And that requires, I think, a shared solution. So the background of where we're at right now is the permitting regime present here is very complicated. There are a, there's a series of ambient air quality data that due to disruptions during COVID had to be worked around with DEP. There are updated permits that were recently issued and, and all the permits are up to date at Hercules. Um, but those, there were certain aspects of those that appeared improperly prepared, or they just had incongruous numbers in them. So we had to resolve that. So we've had a series of meetings with staff at the BSA with DEP to go over these matters in great detail. Um, regarding the setup of the model, the assumptions in the model, the background ambient air conditions. And we have basically resubmitted a scope of work. We'd already submitted a detailed model that showed emissions related to the, to the, to the salt baths. We're creating basically the primary air quality issue, uh, that, that was impacting the school and the sidewalks and the surrounds and the environment. Now, we, we have resubmitted a protocol. The key part here is to establish the baseline. What are the emissions that we're dealing with? Then the second step is to say what mitigation approaches, whether onsite at the proposed school or the school to be proposed for legalization, or potentially a combination of that and mitigation at Hercules, um, or at the, at the emission sources on the rooftop. Now, this is a unique circumstance. I've had experience with other applications in the city that are su- subject to secret environmental review, where coordination within adjacent land use had been performed, where there was a shared commitment to manage emissions so that all parties are safe. So, until we finish our baseline and, and basically indicate what the ambient results are, we, we cannot yet fashion a mitigation approach. But it's my feeling here that it's in the best interest of all parties to come up with a resolution where we can sit down and work with Hercules to develop an approach, uh, that helps to stem these concerns, to make the environment safe for all existing uses and the proposed use. So we are willing to take every measure, because this school does not have an opportunity, as was fairly noted by this board. I match your concerns, because this is a process of discovery for us, complicated traffic issues, uh, which are somewhat mitigated by pedestrian issues and the recommendations of DOT, and obviously air quality concerns. So we, we have very little choice here on behalf of the applicant, but to try to reach a satisfactory resolution of this matter, because they have been in this spot for seven years. These students and their teachers and the administration have lived in this environment, go to school here every day. You know, know one another, getting displaced displaces the nature of this community. And given the growing residential development that has occurred and, and past rezonings on Flushing Avenue that are relatively recent. You know, this corridor along TAFE Place, I would also note, has a pre-existing non-compliant residential structure directly behind 401 Park and directly adjacent to Hercules, has been experiencing the same issues that, that this 401 Park location has been experiencing. And so I think for all parties involved, the, that, you know, some reasonable resolution here, you know, given the good work that Hercules has done, sort of reviewing the details of the environmental assessment and, and staff at the BSA, you know, helping to interface with DEP. But, you know, we are still in the process of finding solutions to mitigate the issues. And I will say this, you know, we will have to go back to the client after this, the administration school, discuss the mitigation, the costs associated with physical improvements that DOT is warranted, uh, as well as potential costs, not only to, you know, we do not want to, uh, basically have an enclosed cube here where, you know, people have to, you know, we have to heavily modify every HVAC system, intake system, closed window system, and, and potentially still have what has been indicated as a, as a risky environment for humans to exist in. So we need to find a solution holistically, and what we've uncovered here is, is an issue that needs to be resolved. So, you know, having said that, you know, we are, at this time, until the applicant says that they have some other option, which they have not identified, um, we, we are willing and ready to work with all parties on this to resolution that, that, that balances everybody's interests and achieves the ultimate goal of, of health and safety for the, for the environment and for the potential school.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Just, just so that I understand. So, um, from what you said, there are 10 separate permits for.
More than, I think there's 12, but yeah, more than 10.
And Hercules has that are in good standing, but the cumulative effect of that has not been analyzed and is, so they are in compliance with current regulations, but the cumulative effect, effect is what is triggering the noise monitoring concerns at the site on the western and northern.
Yeah, it's a unique thing that, and I, you know, I've, I've kind of known this, you know, from working around the country and the way that permit regimes are handled at the state and the local level, is that it's each permit emissions piece is individually analyzed and mitigation, uh, applied, uh, accordingly, based on, uh, NAACs, national air quality attainment goals or other state or local goals. And there are certain thresholds of PM 2.5 particulate or VOCs, volatile organic compounds are emitted in the air, there are certain thresholds that are individually recognized as safe for human exposure, um, above which require additional, uh, mitigation, uh, which can run a variety of gambits of either operational or application to the emission systems. And so the idea here is that the wrinkle is that DEP and, and New York State, for that matter, do not cumulatively analyze the total emissions from the facility. Having said that, there are zoning requirements associated with an, uh, with an M, with M1 districts that, that strictly limit, uh, noise, odor and air emissions from facilities. And those are not individually analyzed. It's a cumulative consideration.
Um, so in that sense, it is not, here you are saying Hercules is not compliant with the zoning requirements for an M1 performance.
Based on the implications from the air mod modeling that we have done, that, that is what we are finding. Um, I cannot say dispositively so, because we have not tested those, but there are both qualitative and quantitative elements in the zoning resolution related to compliance with performance standards.
I'm gonna interrupt, because even if we were entertaining Hercules.
Are we doing this?
Apologies.
Are we, are we, are we having a tit for tat here? I think you should.
Excuse me, Mr. Williams. Excuse me.
Who, who are you? Can you introduce yourself for a moment?
I appreciate. I'm, I'm sorry. This is.
So Vine, that is speaking, just for the record.
Thank you. So I was, I'm gonna continue my statement that e- even if this board was entertaining the issuance of these permits to Hercules that would have been timely, this board doesn't have jurisdiction to consider those permit issuances, and it's not the scope of this board's jurisdiction. Whether or not there's an allegation of these permits being properly, properly or improperly issued to Hercules is not before this board.
All right, who's speaking?
Please let the commissioner speak first and then you can respond, but.
Right. I, I want to add something to it, Mr. Uh, before you say anything, Mr. Most. Uh, I appreciate the thoroughness that Mr. Williams puts in on every project, and he's doing that in this project too. I, as I, I would completely agree with what, uh, our general counsel has stated. And, and I would say that many of these projects that where rezonings have happened and development is happening as of right, while they may not be abutting the, uh, adjacent street and they, they have, they might be across and there might be some impact, but the study analysis that was done for those, there may have been, um, other requirements that were built into these development. What the, what, what we have in hand is an illegal use of a building for a school purposes that was not approved at any point. And so the approval that was granted by, uh, I really take offense in this manner, is that a, a finger is being pointed at Hercules that has been operating based on legal permits, when a school is operating based on a false certificate of occupancy for a trade school, and now it's seeking legalization after seven years. So I, please do be careful where you point your fingers.
Commissioner, I absolutely respect this point. I'm not trying to point any fingers. The fingers were pointed basically by the letters provided by Hercules, that they have dangerous emissions. So we are just responding to that circumstance, and I would also note, please, Chair, one more second, one more second, and I will, and I will relent on this. The special permit is a grant, uh, given for in an M1 zone with the assumption that its abutting properties are operating responsibly. Without it, that permit and the potential right to achieve a special permit are obviated and results in a form of taking. So this is the only reason why I bring this up, and I don't bring any of this up, because Hercules has been very forward on their operations, that we are just looking to resolve this issue. You know, and find means and measures to resolve this issue. And when we understand that there are missions coming from a specific source, that, that we have to help mitigate. You, I'm looking for solutions. And so I'm just, I'm just stating what's on the record, what's been stated by Hercules, but I do get it. It's not their responsibility, you know, to, to, to go in above and beyond to, to satisfy our permit findings.
So I just want to say, as you stated, the permits that are there issue, that have been issued are all legit. And there are, uh, and Hercules is operating based on what they have been permitted to, uh, allow to. So with that stated, I just want to quote one thing from the findings of 7330, 133. It recognized the fact that such operations, if a school were to be operate, uh, to be permitted in a non-residential district, in a C8 or an M1, it had to be mindful of the fact that there were possibilities of adverse effect of the surrounding, uh, non-residential uses. And that, that, uh, all the measures that had to be, uh, had to be taken to address these adverse effects of the surrounding non-residential uses had to be ta- taken care of it on the site.
Understood, Chair.
I, I, I just want to be on record and be very clear. So the, it almost indirectly statingly, it assumes that whatever is happening in the surrounding, you have to accept that, and you have to work within that to resolve the problem on your site.
Yeah, you take it as you come. I got it.
Okay.
I, I also don't find, uh, very compelling that the argument that, that since there are other residential uses as of right, then, you know, they're subject to these, these hazardous conditions, therefore, um, you know, it's, it, it, it's, it's not that bad for us. I, I don't find that so compelling.
No, I'm, I'm, so, uh, Commissioner Sabat, I'm not saying that's that bad for us. I'm saying this is an ambient condition with, with, uh, facially non-compliant land use, you know, that is not, you know, this is operating on it. And again, I'm not saying that there's dispositive proof of this, because I haven't done the test. But I get, I get the chair's point. You, you know, this is sort of like a, you know, a tort action. You take the, 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 the circumstance as it comes. You know, but what I'm stating is we've been made aware of a circumstance. We're trying to resolve that circumstance in a way that's collaborative for all parties involved. And I would be remiss not to note that there are performance standards that, you know, in terms of responses and our comments, to note that to the board. So, you know, and I leave that where it lies. I don't want, I don't mean to annoy the board. I'm just saying there are set of circumstances that if we're able to come together reasonably, we can resolve favorably to all parties.
So I, can I just say something? The way I see it, if they are operating within their parameters and their, um, requirements and restrictions, then it really is up to your applicant to make the findings. And in making the findings for your school location, you may have to help them ameliorate the conditions to your, to meet your findings. It's not upon their, it's not their responsibility to.
Commissioner Brown, 100% correct. And that's actually where I wanted to go. You know, it's incumbent to us to attempt to reach an agreement with Hercules and to facilitate, you know, our, our existence at this location. You're precisely correct, and this is exactly the basis which we have encountered such an issue in the past, where an adjacent use, um, had, had emissions that greatly exceeded a, a rezoning for post-residential use. We had to develop an MOU and basically pay for the mitigation of that use. And, and that's what I'm implicating here. So we're, like, this applicant is willing to entertain and enter discussions related to that, given the circumstance. We understand it's our responsibility to resolve this affirmatively.
Okay, all right. Um, any other questions or comments from, uh, Mr. Most and your team? Okay. No, it seems not. So I want, um, the opposition's team. Mr. Peters. Mr. Peters, you want to, do you want to add anything?
Yes, I would. Thank you kindly, Madam Chair. Um, primarily, I'd like to address first off that Hercules does maintain all necessary permits, both in the city and the state of New York for its operations, and has for nearly 75 years. This is a family-run business. I believe we're on the third or fourth generation of ownership. As you know, we're a subcontractor for the Department of Defense. It sounds like Mr. Williams' testimony, as he said, is not this positive and sounds rather speculative. Um, I, and also any commentary we've made with regards to noise or emissions is more noting the heavy manufacturing and industrial uses that we find in M1 districts and the presence of a school located there on, which of course is permissible with a special permit grant by the board. Um, with that being said, I just want to note one other thing that was in GZA's response to our opposition letters. I believe prior counsel, Mr. Weiss, submitted a letter in honor about November 12th of 2024. And the GZA response letter, I believe incorrectly claims that any noise concerns made were made by Mr. Keane and his technical peer memorandum. I just want to clarify that for the record as well. Um, outside of that, I do want to note that in the, um, the EAS that was submitted, they mentioned about how windows are going to be closed as mitigating measures. I actually personally observed the windows being operable. I just want to put that on the record. Um, also with regard to school busing, which, with, with Swanson's gonna.
Can you repeat?
I'm sorry. Yes, the, the windows along the westerly portion of the building, um, those are operable windows. I actually personally witnessed one of those windows open at my site visit on Thanksgiving Eve. Um, but with that being said, um, Ms. Swanson has also noted seeing students coming out of the building and actually queuing for school buses, like we've seen in some of the photographs that are attached as exhibits to her peer memorandum. Um, I'd like to turn the floor over first to Ms. Swanson, so she could discuss her peer memo in more detail for the board with some of her traffic and parking and safety concerns that arise therefrom. And then I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Keane, so he could discuss some of the planning aspects of the application. So Erica, I'll let you take the.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Um, so I'm Erica Swanson. I'm from Swans Engineering. I'm a traffic engineer. Um, so as you all know, we submitted a peer review memorandum that outlined our concerns regarding the traffic. Um, and we acknowledge that the applicant has provided a response document. Um, however, we're not convinced that the applicant fully addressed our concerns and rather repeated information that was already provided in their application documents. Uh, I'm not going to sit here and go through every point, but I did want to point out three main topics of concern. The first being the one that Mr. Peters brought up about school bus use. Um, we had brought up in our peer memorandum, the discrepancy between the site visit observations and, um, the application, which said the school doesn't utilize yellow school buses, which we've repeated over and over here. Um, the applicant responded that no yellow school buses were used for pickup or drop-off in their, um, in their, uh, response to us. Um, and they did say that the school bus was from a nearby school. So we also observed, like we had talked about, school buses parked on the street near the school. Um, so we're not, we're not, um, arguing that. But, um, as Mr. Peter said, while I was there doing my site visit, I did see students actually leaving the building and entering into a school bus. So that's shown in photo one of our submissions. So I think that still is a discrepancy that, that needs to be addressed. Um, items two and three are really related to each other. Um, that's related to the parking regulations and also the safety of the schoolchildren. So as far as parking is concerned, um, we noticed there's clearly a significant demand for parking in the area. Um, and throughout our field visit, we observed vehicles parked in no parking areas on nearby blocks and in front of the school. We acknowledge that construction is ongoing and that does definitely temporarily increase parking demand. But it's clear to us based on our observations and also historic aerial and street view imagery that violating these parking regulations and parking on the sidewalk and within the crosswalk is common practice throughout the area and not just on the blocks bordering the school. And that's with and without construction. So the applicant is recommending removing additional parking, which as proposed would place a burden on the very active local businesses. We've recommended an on-street parking study to be performed to quantify the result, the impacts of removing the parking. So the applicant, in their response to us, stated that a parking shortfall as a result of discretionary action per seeker guidelines is not considered an impact per review standards. However, in the previous BSA meeting on November nineteenth, it appeared that all parties were in agreement that removing a significant amount of parking would actually impact these local businesses. So despite this conversation, the applicant is stating that they're requesting removal of parking along the entire length of Taffey Place. A parking study would help understand the actual parking demand. It would help better inform decisions related to removing existing parking and also help understand the implications of that decision, including increasing the number of illegally parked vehicles in future conditions. We also observed pickups and drop offs occurring near the school. And these vehicles were often blocking crosswalks and parked in no standing zones and in front of hydrants. The vehicles parked in the crosswalks were obviously of particular concern. Photo six in our memo. For example, shows students actually trying, there's a car parked in the crosswalk and students are trying to pass between two cars. It's a tight space to then cross the street. So it's obviously dangerous. It impacts sight lines and the visibility of the students crossing the streets near the school. The applicant's response to some of these concerns was that school staff would be available to monitor students on route to their neighborhood. But we did observe while we were out there, school staff who appeared to be supervising dismissal, and they weren't addressing those concerns. Like I said, there were school stuff, staff out there while there were vehicles parked within the crosswalk, you know, making it difficult for students to cross the street. In addition to that, the DOT specifically stated in their response with the school safety comments that human controls are insufficient because they're not maintained over time and are often disregarded by students. So in our opinion, this mitigation is inadequate to alleviate that safety concern. So another thing that's been brought up before, I know, is the significant truck activity that's mixing where the students walk and wait for the bus. For example, there's a MTA bus stop on the quarter of Classon and Park Avenue. That's in photos seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. So you can see students waiting for the bus right near the, there's a lumberyard parking lot that trucks are coming in and out of. So there's a lot of mixing there between the students and trucks. So as noted by the DOT, like I said, crossing guards and school staff aren't really reliable to manage a situation like that. So we're especially concerned because these points have been raised as safety concerns and the school is actively illegally operating. And we're not aware of anything that's been done to alleviate these concerns for the children that are currently there while the application is under review. We understand that the BSA won't require any updates until decisions are made, especially for things like parking regulations and infrastructure. But we think the applicant could at least temporarily provide some active staff management to, you know, try to move the vehicles along at least that are parked in the crosswalk or parked in the, the no standing zones or, you know, help the students get across where they're, they're interacting with trucks. So we were out there after the last BSA meeting and also after the DOT comments were received. And conditions were, as I've described, where, you know, there's this unsafe condition for the students that are walking. So this obviously makes us concerned about whether these future conditions are going to actually change. And based on their enrollment, they're looking at student and staff numbers of over a thousand, which is, is pretty high. So that'll exacerbate these safety concerns. So with that, thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Swanson? Go ahead.
Chair, may, may I, after your question, may I just respond to a few? Can we let Mr. Keen speak first?
I just want to make sure if there, if there's anyone else from Mr. Peters' team and then Mr. Williams.
They're allowing Mr. Keen to speak.
Oh, you do? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Michael Keen and by way of professional background, I'm an AICP certified planner, practicing urban planning here in New York City. My specialties include land use zoning and the city environmental quality review process to support the use and development of land. I note here that I had prepared and submitted to the BSA a technical memorandum dated February sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, which examined the seeker EAS prepared in connection with the special permit application. And so my comments today will just briefly summarize the tech memo. And I'll be just targeting two seeker technical areas of particular concern, land use and air quality. So first on the seeker land use assessment, pursuant to the seeker technical manual, a land use assessment categorizes the uses and development trends in an area that may be affected by a proposed project and determines whether a proposed project is either compatible with those conditions or whether it may affect them. The EAS prepared for this application, I found to provide insufficient information regarding the active nearby industrial uses, specifically on block eighteen eighty-one. And it inadequately addresses, assesses the existing non-conforming schools compatibility with these uses. The EAS states only that, quote, "The proposed action would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or district or substantially impair the appropriate use or development of an adjacent property." End quote, end quote. "The proposed action would not be incompatible with the surrounding uses and would not alter or accelerate development patterns in the area." End quote. In fact, there are some thirty-one individual properties within four hundred feet of the school classified as industrial or manufacturing. The EAS land use assessment looks at none of these sites in any detailed manner, which I found to be a curious omission, given that the special permit application is to bring a non-compliant school into compliance on a site surrounded by industrial activities. So next on to air quality. The seeker EAS correctly stated that, quote, "The proposed action would permit a sensitive land use to continue to be located in an area zone for manufacturing uses." End quote. Pursuant to seeker guidelines, the EAS includes a preliminary screening assessment to determine if there are any active sources of industrial process emissions that could affect occupants of the school. Industrial sources were identified within four hundred feet of the schools, specifically on block eighteen eighty-one and eighteen eighty. And based on this, the EAS performs the required dispersion analysis pursuant to seeker methodologies to predict non-criteria and criteria polluting concentrations. Based on the analysis, the EAS concludes that, quote, "With non-operable windows or air vents located on the ground floor level, wall, facade, extending ten to eighty feet south from instructional room number one twelve, no potential significant adverse air quality is predicted from manufacturing processing facilities operating within four hundred feet of the project site." Based on my December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four site visit and previous observations from Mr. Anthony Rizzo of Hercules Heat Treatment Corporation and Mr. George Peters at his November twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four site visit, the ground floor windows on the school's western facade were in fact observed to be operable. The EAS air quality assessment is subject to review by DEP, as Mr. Williams pointed out earlier. Of course, DEP will provide guidance on the analysis and any necessary measures that must be taken to avoid adverse effects, typically through the placement of an E designation on a subject property. Based on GZA's April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five response to my tech memo, I understand coordination with DEP is currently happening. So in conclusion, my considered recommendation is that the draft EAS land use and air quality assessments be expanded to meet the hard look and reasoned elaboration standards for seeker in order to, for the BSA to reach a determination of significance. And I'm happy to answer any questions. That concludes my comments today.
Thank you. Mr. William.
Thank you. I appreciate all three professionals' comments. Let me start with Mr. Keen's, since it's freshest on my memory. So the primary concern with the land use compatibility analysis is, is about the presence of industrial uses. The air quality analysis per compliance with DEP regulations and seeker standards analyzes every unpermitted and permitted emission source within a four hundred foot radius. And this has been subject to DEP review. The implication regarding the incompatibility of use, part of it is, you know, proof of the notion here that it's existed at this location for seven years without any known complaint directed from any of these adjacent uses. But also the detailed air quality assessment, where the primary environmental externalities would be sourced from, have been studied and analyzed and in great detail. So then that is going to be subject ultimately to DEP's, you know, review for the hard look. But we have complied with this. And I would note, you know, just texturally in terms of the land use context, while there are considerable manufacturing uses primarily to the north and to the, the west of the site, there's primarily residential parkland and institutional uses that dominate to the south and the east of the site. It's almost entirely split with Taffey Place having both parkland and institutional and residential uses, you know, dominating the Taffey Place corridor with a light industrial basically connecting to Flushing Avenue. But anyway, so that's kind of my rebut on that. I do understand, you know, your, maybe your desire to have the air quality analysis sort of plugged into the land use framework. But this is, you know, how these applications have been done for years and the seeker analysis for their quality is extensive and compliant. And ultimately, DEP will, DEP will make a determination regarding the windows. So as a stipulation of the resolution and as a requirement of DEP, these will be required to, to, to be closed. And they would have, be required to have proof of closure that they be fixed. We have not reached that mitigation. Obviously, given our analysis to date and where we're at with, with permitting, our review from DEP, this is something that the school should implement immediately based on our, where our modeling is at. So I take that comment from, from those Mr. Peters and Keen as, as, you know, something that should happen immediately. But please note that that's, that is the outcome of this is that they would have to require alternative means of ventilation and a closed fixed window condition that would have to be demonstrated as being inoperable. In terms of Ms. Swanson's comments, so I think a lot of this, there was a lot of thoughtful consideration here. We did put out cameras, you know, twenty-four seven for two weeks. We did not observe school bus loading. And that is a change in condition that from our initial field analysis, this is certainly something we're going to have to bring up with the school because we have not been made aware of student loading, nor did we observe it in extensive field observations or in camera evaluation. So we will certainly have to look at that at great detail. I agree with you on this notion of that current pedestrian operations would, would be enhanced by active staff safety measures, crossing guards. This is something that we identified multiple years ago and requested that the school take care of. And this is certainly something after this conversation, if they want their application to be viewed favorably by this board or given a somewhat of a deference that they're being a positive operator, that they need to implement immediately. I would note that as a part of the past seven years, we do an accident analysis. There have been no incidents of school accidents, pedestrian, bike, or otherwise related to school students. But that does not necessarily make the future safe. The one thing to note, you know, as you noted, parking. So in any district, particularly in this section of Brooklyn, parking is at a premium. We acknowledge that. One of the issues here is not really about parking. It's, it's about using the school's operation as a potential way to make an operational enhancements on Taffey Place that are warranted. The narrowest the street, the parking on both sides of the street does not really support the favorable vehicular operations of manufacturing uses in the area. And I think DOT recognizes that. That's why at their request, they have asked that a school safety zone to allow proper vehicular maneuvering down the corridor as well as a revocable consent for bollards and protection from the street to the sidewalk be put in place. And please note that any signage change would be subject to community board approval. Without that approval, DOT is highly unlikely to make that change. And if either one or, or the other requests a parking study as proof of the necessity or impact thereof, we would certainly engage in that. Having said that, this is not a parking shortfall matter. This is a traffic operational matter that DOT has deemed warranted based on existing circumstances in the neighborhood. And, and, you know, yes, are there cars parked on the sidewalk? Are they doing that out of convenience? It's illegal because the street is too narrow to have parking on both sides of the street. So that is why that modification is being done, not out of the furtherance of extra parking capacity in the neighborhood. So, but a lot of, I think, a lot of thoughtful analysis, Ms. Swanson. I think we do have to go back and have a discussion with the applicant regarding their current pedestrian safety operations and whether or not they are using buses. And this is an enduring element and a change that, you know, we have not observed. So I do appreciate those observations that both Amber and I were disturbed to see that photo. So the last thing, I think, I think Mr. Peters' comments on the windows was discussed. You know, obviously, that's something that will be resolved. I, I'm not sure if there were other things that I missed, but, you know, I, I, I hopefully, you know, with the three of you, I respect you all seeing your CVs, you know. I think it would be best for all of us to have a, a practical discussion about all this, whether we can resolve things or not. You know, to anyone's satisfaction is yet to be seen. But I think the deference of the board, you know, before we come to another hearing, you know, maybe our, our clients can discuss this and see if there's an opportunity to, to, to see if there's any way to stem or resolve the issues amongst the two of us.
Mr. Williams, thank you for your feedback on this. This is, it is appreciated. I, I do know every project that you take on, you take on with the an ability to resolve the matter and I, and, and it is greatly appreciated and your insight is helpful. I would though advise, and as Mr. Williams pointed out, there are certain measures that are falling short and the school itself can be proactive in taking some of those measures without us having to do anything. This is for the safety of your own children. And that should not be coming from us or from Hercules or from Mr. Williams. It's really, the school should be taking that direction. And, and also part of being good neighbors is to be good neighbors all along and not when it is before the board. So if that means talking to whoever is parking the school bus that does not belong to you, but maybe affiliated with a school that, that falls affiliated with this similar school of your school, you may want to reach out to them and ask them to correct it. It's a good neighbor thing and everybody has to coexist. And, and, and these are all the steps that everyone, including Hercules, is taking and you're taking to make the entirety of the neighborhood safe, not just for yourself, but for everybody. And especially in light of the fact that you have children studying in the school. So I would say those are things that should not be told by us.
Understood.
So that's what I will say. Is there any other questions, comments? Because if not, I would want to open this to the public.
I believe we rest our opposition at this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Let's go to the public then.
Okay, the case that we're currently discussing is two thousand and twenty-four oh nine BZ, four oh one Park Avenue, Brooklyn. Should you wish to discuss, dial six six nine two five four five two five two. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six one one eight four eight 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 five and press the pound sign. At the prompt, after that, you'll press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you'll press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute as you're calling in on the phone. And if in the Zoom room are ready, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you're recognized, you'll have three minutes in which to discuss.
I'm just trying to see if anybody has. Ms. Benke, is there any update on the review status at DOT and DEP?
Sorry, I'm checking my notes here. Um. As Mr. Williams said, the. They consult, um. There was a submitted revised air quality protocol which we sent to D E P um last week. So we are, we will see how um they respond. Noise is still open. Um, hazmat, there's outstanding. The D E P requested the phase two work plan and hasp, so I believe we're waiting for response on that from the applicant. And D O T uh seeker team was going to submit comments. We haven't heard from them yet and. School safety, we received, we're waiting for final feedback from school safety, so.
No, we did get some feedback from school safety.
Okay, I I meant. The final, um, I don't know if we issued those comments formally, so.
Okay.
They want to see the schematics for sidewalk reconstruction and to ramp upgrades at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No one has raised their hands.
Nobody has raised their hands. Um, so um, this is all up to review uh still. And, excuse me. Sorry. Um. So any submission that is made to uh Mr. Williams, Mr. Most, uh, any submission that is made to B S A regarding this application or to any agency. Uh, I would say um ensure that those documents are provided to uh Mr. Peters and his team. And uh, we will um get back to as to when this is being scheduled to both of both members, uh, to Mr. Most and to Peters. As to when it's going to be scheduled, so we'll have to arrange the hearing in a way that gives Mr. Peters enough time to review the submissions for for Mr. Peters to respond. So that would have to be factored into the time for review, but I don't want to delay this. This is. We have an illegal situation and we need to make sure this is corrected. So the the burden lies on the applicants. To expedite this and and provide the response in the correct. Manner so that all the reviews of other agencies are done appropriately and with utmost uh. Speed.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you much. Uh, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Most, are you for the next case?
No, that's Kurt.
Oh, that's Kurt. I'm sorry. Yes, I apologize. Item number twenty five, twenty twenty four, twenty seven B C and fifty five, twelve B C, seven sixty two White Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay, I've let Mr. Steinhaus.
And I should be joined by Hiram Rothkrieg.
Okay, uh, yes, I've also.
All right. You ready? Is that Steinhaus?
Yes, just us.
Um, to your firm, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions.
Yes.
Yes.
Please state your name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
Kurt Steinhaus. Um, good afternoon, Kurt Steinhaus from the law firm B C L P. In connection with this application for an amendment to a school special permit and variances to facilitate an enlargement of the four-story portion of the school building to a uniform six stories. Um, we heard your comments and concerns at review session. Um, and the school is actively reevaluating storage opportunities within the building, both before and after the proposed enlargement. So the current storage opportunities as well, um, as well as curbside uh containerization, um, uh. Protocols while waste is awaiting pickup by the Department of Sanitation. Um, and we appreciated the comments that um the board made about Penn Street, especially with respect to um. Essentially proposing to double up obstruction, so we will be reevaluating um that. Um, I am joined today by Hiram Rothkrieg from Environmental Studies Corporation, who will now provide an update on revisions to the E A S.
Uh, there were two outstanding items on our part. One is a a detailed noise study for. Uh, the rooftop playground and the addition of the school, and the second is an industrial. Uh, air air permit uh search and and report. Uh, the noise, we were supposed to be out there today, but we had to cancel because of weather conditions. Will be out there on Thursday and a full noise study will be submitted to the board next week. Uh, in addition, we were waiting for permits from the D E P for surrounding industrial sources. Um, we're hoping to get those permits quickly and uh and also uh submit. Submit an updated E A S with that information and it shortly.
Great. And Hiram, could you also speak to the um two conditions that the board had in the original grant? The first had to do with sound attenuation of the windows and the second had to do with um hazmat and a remedial closure report.
Yeah, well, we're. There are, there are, there are conditions for the noise. There was a noise study conducted with uh with recommendations and and approvals back in two thousand and twelve. And we'll have to give the board a compliance chart to show that we we are in fact uh. Uh, in in compliance with the with the noise measurements that were taken in two thousand and twelve. Additionally, I was just recently able to locate uh the phase two. And a soil and vapor report that was done by a different firm back in two thousand and twelve, and I'm going to submit that to the board as well.
Um, and I believe we also heard from um D E P that they didn't have any further questions with respect to hazmat. Because no additional ground disturbance was proposed.
Then that's correct. There were recommendations based on if soil disturbance would have occurred, what would need to be done. But based on the fact that there was no construction or or any new soil disturbance in the basement of the building. Uh, there were no recommendations for any further testing or analysis.
Great. And Hiram, with respect to the um the noise study with uh for the rooftop play area, uh, we would expect to put together um any. Acoustical measures um for the proposed fencing after that study is conducted, right?
Absolutely. That will be part of our, that'll be part of our noise study and recommendations.
Great.
That will show, you know, we might uh we might choose to put up fencing in in any event for the safety of the children on the roof.
Yes, fencing is currently proposed.
Yes, and those need to be reflected in the revised set of uh in the in the plans.
Yes.
I did, I did have questions regarding the clarification of the play area from. I I I, because like I said, I found a little bit of inconsistency in the documents as to how the Penn Street is going to be used for play area. Or is it the playground that is next to Penn Street, or is it both?
My understanding is that the pla- uh, that, excuse me, the way that the school operates, Penn Street is closed down for safety. Um, but it's actually the playground itself that is the play area. And so the architect's calculations um showed that even with the proposed enlargement, um, the new rooftop spaces. Um, since there was, there's the lower one and the upper one, um, would not be sufficient to completely stop using the playground, but it would um. You know, diminish the amount that the school needs to rely on that, and they've been um actively working with the Department of Transportation. In terms of open streets and making sure that, um, you know, uh, D O T is okay with um the way that um they've been operating with Penn Street.
Uh, it would be good, um. I don't know if that is something that are. Um, as part of our review, uh, is that integrated into our review or is that's a separate review that is happening? The open street.
Oh, uh, I believe it's just a separate review. Um, my understanding of the process is that schools can um request uh sort of open street play areas. Um, sort of separate and apart from secret.
Thank you. Um. Any other questions or comments? Um, let's go to the public then.
Okay, the case that we're currently discussing. Is twenty twenty four twenty seven B C and fifty five, twelve B C, seven sixty two White Avenue, Brooklyn. Should you wish to comment on this case, dial six six nine. Two five four five two five two. At the prompt, you will enter the webinar ID number one six one one eight four. Eight 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 five and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute. As you're calling in on the phone, any of the Zoom room are ready, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you are recognized, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
Okay. Um. Ms. Benke, is there any update? On the review status?
Hi, um, uh, D C P did determine that a W R P is needed for this application. Um, despite the it being an expansion, so we are waiting on that from the applicant. As Hiram said, they're working on the air quality and noise. We had sent shadows. Um, to parks last week when we received the revised E A S. And we will need uh the disadvantaged community assessment added to the E A S as well when it's ready from the applicant. Um, in line with the recent secret changes. And as I said, there's um no open hazmat at this time regarding the expansion and. Um, school safety, I believe we're still waiting response from. The resp- I mean, from school safety of the responses, is that correct, Jala?
Uh, we sent them the trash management plan, which um was one of their big comments, so they're reviewing it.
Okay. Thanks.
And since we're going to be, um, you know, substantially modifying that, um, it might. Help to or be good to alert them that we'll be sending something uh improved.
Right, yeah, I was wondering if we should do that. Yeah, that would be a good idea if the board agrees.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, let's not send the the current operation. Let's wait for the revised operation and send that.
Oh, oh, I sensed it already when it came in, the day it came in, but I'll tell them to pause and that the board has requested something. Further improved. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Okay, nobody called in. Um, thank you very much. Good seeing you.
You too.
Thank you. Item number twenty six, twenty twenty four forty one B C, one oh five thirty nine Cross Bay Boulevard, Queens.
You guys deserve a medal. There's some complicated variances.
Um, are any part of this team going to speak? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So everyone who's going to speak, uh, raise your right hands. Anyone else on the screen? Oh, there's Barbara. Hi, Barbara. Uh, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions? Oh, what happened? Oh, Ian.
Oh, it's a yes for me.
Well, well, let's do it again.
Okay.
Truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions.
Yes.
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 AI, thank you. Nice to see everyone.
Nice to see everybody. Complicated schedule and I give you a lot of credit. Hello, good afternoon, Eric Palatnik on behalf of Paulo Campero and the property on Cross Bay Boulevard. We heard your review session and we heard a lot of your comments. Uh, we appreciate all the diligent thought that you have put into the application to get us to this point. I'll start with just the idea of the board in general, which you know to be the case, which is. You are a relief valve, a safety valve when things don't go well. As a matter of fact, the New York State Department of State, which I was going to pass up to you, but it's not worth it to pass up to you, has a whole printout for zoning boards if you're on a zoning board in New York State. And one of the things it says in it is that the zoning board, their job and your job, and you know it better than I do, is to be. The laws required a municipality with zoning must have a zoning board of appeals and the board should act as a safety valve to keep the zoning restrictions from being overly rigid. And I don't have to tell you, I don't have to remind you, that's what, that's what you do all day and you do a damn good job at it. We're here because we have a property that's been caught in the crossfire. We all started December not knowing what the end of December was going to bring. And the end of December brought the city of yes, and there was no way the applicant could have known it, no way your board could have known it. There are new regulations in the city of yes. That many of us still don't know. There are special permits at the board that I'm sure some people that are on the board staff don't even know about yet, that I don't even know about yet. And we're all learning it day by day, and this property is no different. This property has been subject to a variance. For eighty years, eighty five, nearly a century. It started nineteen forty. It was affirmed in two, the early two thousands. And the variance stated over and over again that it's on a commercial thoroughfare. It's an irregularly shaped property with irregularly dimensions, and it has a history of commercial use. We've given you tax photos. We've given you photographs going back a century showing you the condition on Cross Bay Boulevard. Cross Bay Boulevard has evolved through the years. It's a commercial thoroughfare. It's Jericho Turnpike in Long Island. It's Route twenty three in Wayne, New Jersey. It is not a residential block and new housing in the form of a multiple dwelling is an entirely new concept in ozone park, Queens. You don't drive down through ozone park and see multiple dwelling after multiple dwelling, nor do you hear too many people on the streets of ozone parks saying, we can't wait to move into an apartment in our area. Now, why am I telling you this? Why am I saying this? I am the biggest advocate of housing in New York City. I heard everything he said about the mantra of city of yes, the purpose of creating housing. I am one of the largest applicants at city planning doing rezoning applications, and I'm there every week at different community boards advocating for more housing to be created. If housing could be created on this lot and it would work, we'd be the first people to jump up and say it, that it works. It doesn't work, and the reason it doesn't work is for quite a few different reasons. It all add up into an elaboration of impacts that make it nearly impossible to develop it with housing. What are the different things that are going on? Well, first of all, let's just talk from a land use and planning perspective. I have letters to you from the community board and from the civic association saying that they'd rather have the proposed use that we are proposing here than anything else. We've spoken to the civic association, we've spoken to the community board, John Calhoun Neely, who's an architect. We've been to the community board. They would like what we are proposing. So just from the uh the the sea finding, the character of the neighborhood, the community would like it, but if you don't even believe what they're advocating for. Just try and imagine what's allowed as of right and the impact it'll have on these people's homes on ninety fifth street behind us. What you're asking or suggesting that we demonstrate that can't be done, which we're going to tell you can't be done, is to put up nearly a hundred foot brick wall in the middle of their block. Eighty feet. I don't know how long the building would be. It would be very long, though. Probably from the the point when you walk out of the doors here until this point right here, and it would take a quiet residential street and put a. Nonstop brick wall up at two, at least two stories tall, and if we if we go up higher to provide parking, which we could, we could be at three stories. And to the point of why we didn't, the the commissioner's question, why didn't we uh put a cellar in? We were trying to trim down the costs on the proposed developments so we could provide as realistic a development alternative as we can. But going back to the the land use and the planning perspective. The community board, which is a well-spoken community board, quite active in land use matters, run by John Calhoun Neely with fifty years of experience as an architect in New York City. With a civic association that's got a bigger mouth than me, all said, hell, no, they don't want anything other than what we are proposing. Why do they like what we're proposing? Because we're putting landscaping in the back, we're putting fencing in the back, we're agreeing to keep garbage under control, we're agreeing to be under their thumb as a community. And create a streetscape on ninety fifth street that's more accommodating to them than an apartment building would be. Now, your board raised questions during the review session about building the housing. And it brought me back to what maybe you might remember Bob Paul's. Uh, and and Bob Paul's used to get up before the board. He taught me, this is a young guy, he's Barbara's former boss, he's now deceased. And he's a financial consultant. What Bob Paul's used to say all the time is just because you can build more. Sometimes it just lets you lose more money. You don't always win by building more. There's a cap to what people in ozone park are going to pay for the least desirable form of housing in their community that they see, which is an apartment building. If you go to ozone park, I cannot tell you over and over and over again that it is filled with single and two-family homes. Multiple dwellings are not pleasant in their community. So when that four lint sign goes up on that building. So when that four-wrench sign goes up on that building, it's not going to be something where people are going to line up and say, yeah, we want to pay top dollar. They're going to pay an okay amount. The problem is it's expensive to build. It's expensive to build here for a bunch of different reasons. Not the least of which is the soil conditions, which the Arctic feels exist and we could justify that. But take away that for a moment. You're all watching the news, you're all watching inflation, you're all watching interest rates and you're all watching tariffs and you're all watching the cost of construction. I could put you in a room with a hundred developers right now that tell you they can't even afford to build in New York City the way it is right now without a variance. Nevertheless, to go and build an as-of-right, novel, multiple dwelling on Cross Bay Boulevard in the community where people have grown up with yards and they're there for their cars and their yards and their ball fields and their kids, they're not there to move into an apartment and we can't make money with a proposed apartment building. Now, when it comes to the property being unique, we heard what you said, that you don't believe the shape is unique. But you got to give the site a little bit of credit. It doesn't carve up like other sites around it. It's a sliver. If you look at the nineteen thirties, I don't know if you can pull it up, that imagery you have from nineteen thirty, it looks exactly the same, but the avenue is wide and it cuts into the block front at this location. That's why there's a used car dealership next door. That's why there's a community facility on the other side. That's why there are commercial uses running up and down the block. Nobody in Ozone Park grows up saying, I can't wait to put a beautiful house on Cross Bay Boulevard, nor can I wait to put a swimming pool in my backyard on Cross Bay Boulevard. This is Cross Bay Boulevard, it hasn't changed. The building's on the left. Can you go to the picture of the building that exists in Ian's thing? He shows another picture. Yeah, he has another, the next page. That was the building a hundred years ago. There were probably houses behind it. Ozone Park has been there for a long time. John Gaby used to live there, by the way, as a matter of fact, there's a little bit of New York City folklore. But nonetheless, what we're trying to make the argument to you on is that this piece of property is not ideal for an as-of-right use. And the board even discussed it during their review session, during your review session. And you honed right in. You said, show us that the other alternatives won't work. And we can show you. You said, show us that putting in a commercial use on the ground floor won't work. Well, that's a variance. That shows you that the property is unique. We know the property is unique. Obviously, the property is unique. Two boards have said it's unique. I'm not showing up here for the first time in a hundred years making my own claim that the L shape, the history of development or any of that, which I know the board says being on a busy road isn't a unique characteristic. And it might not be a unique characteristic over here on Second Avenue in Manhattan. But in Ozone Park, where people go there for quiet and comfort and solitude, it's not exactly a selling point to say you're on the highway. In Brooklyn, it is. It's a huge selling point. The kids love to be on the BQE, they want to be in the midst of all the action. They want to walk downstairs and go out on the street and go out and party and have fun. That's not what's going on in Ozone Park.
Can I just?
Yes.
Break in here?
Go on, jump in, please.
Taking a long time.
And I'll stop.
This is what we've got from you so far. A review of what our abilities are as the board, which one could take as a threat or not, or one can just take as a stroll down memory lane. Oh, look at what we can do because we weren't aware of what we can do. And an anecdote-filled defense. And what we're trying to tell you and what we have been trying to tell you from the get-go is that the board does not take lightly, lightly to ignoring the city's direction on housing and placing housing wherever it can, wherever it can, where there's a public transportation option nearby. So if you want to win this argument, anecdotes are not going to help you. Threats are not going to help you either. But going back to the drawing board and asking for the extra information that we asked for to prove us wrong is what's ultimately going to help you. And standing up at the dais and taking up a half an hour to tell us what we all can tell just by driving through, but doesn't make a variance argument, doesn't meet the findings, is not going to help you. It's only going to annoy us.
Well, we don't mean to annoy you. City of Yes just came out as the application was, came to hearings. The last hearing, we did not have a substantive discussion on the city of yes. And we're not trying to threaten the board at all. I don't know what threat we were making, I was making by speaking to things. We were simply trying to call out the fact that the property does have a unique history to it and that the board does have it within their discretion to act on it. We've heard your points clearly. Barbara's on the phone and I think she'd like to speak to things. But we did hear your point to prove to you that an as-of-right mixed-use development with commercial at the ground floor will not work at the premises. And we're prepared to show that to you and to do the heavy lifting. I just wanted to put it into context a little bit because I did hear at the review session, and I didn't mean to waste the board's time or threaten at all, but I heard at review session over and over that there's nothing unique about the property, that it's just obsolete. And there is a uniqueness to it. It's not, it's a through lot that doesn't have the typical depth of a normal block front in New York City, it's at a hundred and fifty feet and tapers in, has an irregular shape to it, has a history of commercial uses. And I won't repeat myself, but that's why, we didn't mean to threaten.
Mr. Palatnik, you actually did us a favor by submitting those four cases, which actually don't support your argument, but the case that was denied by the board, I strongly suggest that you and your team review that because it actually answers exactly the question that Commissioner Artley Brown is raising. And I have read it and I was, my, my, it raised the same set of questions that we are asking. So it's not like something novel that we're asking.
I understand.
And it is not a site that is unique, 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 that has never been before the board. It has some similar concept of this site. Why, that was a corner site, this is a through site. Both had frontages, both were in a residential area with or without commercial overlay and we're asking for a used variance and a new construction. So read through that and then make your statements and refine your statement. And then go, and it also talked about the financial issues that you're talking about and how the zoning and all the elements of the zoning. So I would strongly suggest read through that and figure out how to answer the questions that the board had asked and this board is asking. And then convince us that an as-of-right with a commercial use does not work.
Fair enough.
And then only we can consider a use. I'm not still convinced that it's a drive-through that it has to be. Maybe it can be just a sit-down, eating and drinking. So we have to go through, it is, as Commissioner Artley Brown pointed out, it's like doing the reverse engineering of a residential use in an IBZ. This is what we are doing. So you have to walk us through those steps. You are asking us to jump to your conclusion, but you have to walk us through every steps that you in your mind, you have jumped through, but you have to walk us through that exercise.
I understand.
I just wanted to add a couple of things.
Please say please for the record.
Joseph Anzalone, architect. I just want to add, because you guys made a couple of comments earlier on about whether we considered it was a through lot and as we did, we based the zoning analysis that we did based on it being a through lot. And also, there's a lot of discussion about putting in a basement, a cellar, whatever. So the sites that, the analysis that we did maxed out the floor area. So adding a basement or a cellar wouldn't give you any more because that would be countable floor area. And we already pretty much exhausted the amount of available floor area to us. So it wouldn't be, adding a basement would just increase the cost of the project.
You can put this in your submission, you can put it in your narrative, but as we're going through the explanation. But as Commissioner, sorry, I know Commissioner Yun wants to.
Oh, I just, if you're going to say that now, then don't use it as a conversing argument inside the documents. It's, exactly. It's inconsistent, it makes us frustrated.
No, I'm sorry, that's, the calculation submitted shows that. If you, if you look at it, it looks at the available floor area.
Narrative to say that we can't have a cellar, that's somehow a disadvantage to this project. And what you two have been saying here is not the same thing.
Right.
And so we're hearing kind of a, everything you can throw at us argument for every thing we're saying and it's just inconsistent and it's frustrating because it doesn't make any sense. If you can't put in a cellar, put your mechanical on the ground floor. Then you deduct it from your floor area. You still have height. You can go up to forty-five feet. So what are we doing here? What's the hardship?
Okay, so I don't want to, you know, I'm not being, I just want to, what we submitted is correct. It's thirty-five feet on the height and.
Street wall height.
Right, so increasing the building height doesn't give us any more units. So the zoning analysis, as it is, based on number of units and the viable floor area is not going to change. Right? I just wanted to add that because you guys had questions on it. I'm not throwing you out there. It's just information that maybe you didn't realize was there.
Okay.
Hi, Eric Palatnik. Again, nobody, nobody in our team is trying to frustrate the board in any way, shape or form. It's not our intent at all. We are trying to just set forth our position and obviously we're not doing it as clearly as we could. And we appreciate the chance to do it again. Barbara Pauls, Barbara is here, I was going to say Barbara Pauls, formerly of Robert Pauls. Can you testify?
I'm here. Barbara Cohen, financial consultant, real estate and planning consultant. Yeah, I used to be called B in Robert B. Pauls, but anyway. And I will say that I try very hard not to do anything to tarnish my reputation in terms of how I approach each of the submissions. So this submission that was done in July of twenty twenty-four was obviously pre-city of yes. And what was analyzed was the two-family home scenario and then the proposed. The, and all the market data, all the site value, figuring all, all was done based on that. And for that, because the two-family homes were three, three building lots, it was based on a building lot and that was translated to match that. So then we had the hearing and city of yes comes into play. So allows a more buildable area. And so to me, it was important to match that, the development potential increase with also the site value. So what I did in this report was to deal with this, the change from, from the prior submission, pre-city of yes. And I kept those scenarios the same, which again, we would do, we would always do the snapshot in time and not change any assumptions in the subsequent submissions. But in, now we, we propose a new as-of-right with more development potential. So I had to make the appropriate search for, for land sales and translate it to reflect that added development potential. Now, when I did that.
I have a question.
Sure.
Sorry. Okay, so you are trying to, the way you're approaching is this was submitted as a pre-ZHO and the value of the land was based on pre-ZHO. Okay.
Right.
Now, post-ZHO, whatever the site value is for an as-of-right two-family and a site value for an as-of-right multifamily should be the same. Why should they be different then?
Well, I wasn't going to change the as-of-right two-family. And that scenario itself, you know, is not the best as-of-right that you, you know, would put forth. So we, you know, went with the multifamily, which now was now available. I mean, I can go back. But again, it's that business of changing what was originally submitted. So I was trying to, to maintain things, but yet have to, you know, reflect the new, the new.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is, I'm just confused. I mean, and this is not my forte, but so if you're going to change the site value based on the city of yes, the side value should be reflected on all, all of them consistently. Why is one showing more, one is proposing doing less and the as-of-right? The side value should be based on what is the zoning that would be permitted? What is the developable maximum? And in this case, the developable maximum as-of-right is a multifamily unit. So all of the side value should be based on that. Am I wrong?
But that's, but that means what Commissioner Brown doesn't want you to do, which is go back and change everything that was originally submitted and then now apply it to, to that, you know, you're changing as you're going. And the as-of-right scenario with the multifamily is a new item based on a new, new zoning, right? So it has to, you know, reflect. I can hear.
A bunch of things about the site value changing. The last thing I said about the site value changing is we usually don't allow people to change anything once the report is submitted. You could argue that you have a different and extenuating circumstance that would lead you to change the site value. The first thing I said about the site value was that you're using two different site values and that's like valuing apples and oranges and it's far more difficult to determine. I believe that's the very first thing I said. The second thing that I said about your site, your new site value is that I felt it was overcounting the developable square feet because you were using a land factor based on improved land and you didn't discount that land for the structure. Then the third thing I said was what you're quoting now. So how do we proceed? We want one site value for all scenarios. Are we open to the idea that the site value would be a little higher because the as-of-right is higher? Yes, we would be if you were to make the argument to us that you would like to raise the site value, given the city of yes has made this site far more valuable. So we'd be open to that, but keep the site value the same in all of your scenarios.
Well, I was just pointing out that the scenario of the multifamily was something new, right? That, and that the, you wouldn't have had that before, which was the prior submission. And so, you know, they are, they did.
Okay, I'm going to just.
This is about form more than substance right now and it's about the format we want you to follow. Same site value, all three scenarios. You want to make the argument the land is more valuable now? We're even sympathetic to that argument. We would probably accept it. Same site value for all of the scenarios and comparables should be vacant land. If they are improved with viable buildings, which your photo suggests, then you have to discount out the value that is the structure because you're valuing vacant. Then at that point, you could create your land factor and value it at its max FAR. But those are the steps you have to follow. You followed like one of them. Follow all of those steps and then we'll be in agreement about the site value that you come to.
Okay, that's, that's fine. The, the, the reason why I had to select the parcels that had structures on it is because there were no vacant land sales available. And then I said, because the structure was less than forty percent of each of the lots, that they were considered development sites. So, but yes, I think we, the discounting a little bit of the structure, I think, is appropriate and that's fine. But I just wanted to point out that I did, you know, say that there, there were no vacant parcels and I had to use what was available. And I picked those that the lot was large and the structure was small. What else, what else? So the, so back to the two families. So let me ask you though, the two-family, if there's really, if it really becomes not the best as-of-right, even with city of yes, and I have to ask the architect about it, do we still show it or do we move it out because it doesn't really apply anymore?
I don't think it's helping your argument, but if you want to keep it, it's your call. But keep it consistent in terms of the, some of the base.
Right.
Do you want to keep it and you're going to discount the sales prices of the comparables by thirty percent?
So that was my other, right. So, yeah, no, I understood that. I mean, there is certainly an impact on having it on facing Cross Bay Boulevard for sure. And I actually did some quick calculations and even if it was a hundred percent, it still wouldn't, wouldn't play out. But that's, that's fine and I'll see if my thirty percent can be supported with other, the other comparable.
Just this scenario.
Yeah, yeah, I got that. The cap rate, I can certainly look into that, not a big deal. We do remember that cap rates also, you know, they do reflect the quality of the project. It's not just residential is X in the city, but you got to look at the quality of the project itself. So, so that's where that comes in, but certainly again. But certainly, again, lowering it a little bit is not a big.
If you want to use a cap rate of six for residential, which is on the high side and it's higher than your retail, then do a fallout cap rate analysis of sales in the area of multifamilies and show me that six is the going in cap rate in that area and I'll accept that.
Right, no, I get it.
Back it up.
Okay, not a problem. I'm trying to think, was there anything else? So we're going to go look at the, the mix of retail and residential scenario. And we'll see where that plays out. And I think that was it.
Construction costs were fine.
Right.
Please, no changes.
No, no, no. It's not been my habit to do so. And it was, this was tough to figure out, what do I do, right? That there's, you know, so I, I picked a method, you know. Because I didn't want to go back and start changing site values on all the scenarios when, you know, it didn't make sense. I mean, you know, it was that snapshot in time, which is something we, we, we hold on to throughout the time the hearings and take place. You know, if someone buys a site, you know, before city of yes, you know, the seller can't come running after, hey, hey, give me more money because the zoning changed, right? So, you know. So anyway, so we'll move on. We'll do the other scenario, see what that brings and, and fix the other pieces.
All right, go ahead.
I have nothing else to add.
I think what I would also say that this is where the creativity of the architect has to come in. Don't think of this as a way to prove that the site has to fail for everything, but only succeed for a drive through eating and drinking establishment. Think of it this way, and this is what my criticism, I used to tell the architect. Think of it this way, I want you to build a, a mix of residential and commercial building on this site. Maybe it's a standalone commercial building on Cross Bay and with a multifamily building on the 95th Street. Or maybe it is just a, a commercial building on the ground floor with residential above on, on both Cross Bay and on 95th. But I'm the client, you have to tell me this is going to work, this is not. And this goes, you have to work hand in hand with Ms. Cohen to figure out what is going to work, not what is going to fail. And then based on that, if that, whatever is going to best work is what you present to us. And then walk us through the exercise of, we tried all these other scenarios. And out these scenarios, this is the one that best works, yet it fails. Okay?
Understand. We, we actually did try everything you suggested and we didn't present it here, but we did try it.
The drawing board.
But, no, but when I, when you say, what we, what we provided is what we had currently, the feedback we received previously, which is maxing out based on the zone, city of yes, what's allowed. And that's what we did. So we didn't give you something less. We felt something that was pretty much on the point of what zoning allows.
And I think what we are, I think at the last hearing, I did say, look at an as of right and if need, a mix of residential, commercial, a lesser variance. I had me, I, I have it on my note.
That'll be another variance.
Yeah, well, no, no, that's a lesser variance. That is the minimal, that is the minimal. And I, yeah, and I had said as of right, if not as of right lesser variance with, with combined residential, commercial on ground floor and a standalone ground floor or to, to reach to the, I guess I, I was typing as I was saying it, but basically what I said. So I did say it out then and I'm saying it again. Go through that exercise and see what was the best of these scenarios, lesser variance scenarios that would work. Is there a lesser variance scenario that would work?
Right, well.
And then provide the analysis and Ms. Cohen can work with you on that.
Yeah, obviously that would, that would mean much less number of units. And that's why we stuck with the as of right because that's what we felt.
Say, based on the analysis that Ms. Cohen is going to do on the revised site plan. The question, because how less viable will the residential, as of right residential world become? That's the first exercise, right? Because we are asking you to change the side value. We are asking is to reevaluate the cap rate. Based on that, the differences of the as of right may be the same, maybe more, maybe less, don't know. Based on that, you then say, okay, maybe we can carve it out in this manner to give little bit, to, to fill the gap of the difference. And which scenario of that will make that gap better? And then present that. Am I making?
You're, you're perfectly clear. I, we will work together. I, I always push them to make sure that it's the best it can be. So not to worry.
You, you may end up exactly where you tell us after you do all of this forensically. It may drive through, but then at least we can rest our hat on the fact that we have tried in every way possible to keep this site a potential residential site. And that'll give us what we need to be able to grant the variance.
I get it. Like, like I said, we, we just pursued like the maximum number of units because that's what I think the board is looking at.
And you were right in doing what you did. You were right in doing that.
I would just, one small request is to add dimensions on your as of right plans. Because the overall building widths and dimensions, I couldn't find them. And maybe the, the unit dimensions, just throw a couple of.
Yeah, we, we basically, we basically just removed the required, you know, dropped in the required yards and that's your footprint.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Anything else, Mr. Plodding, from your team?
No, I'm not saying anything else. I've got no more anecdotal anecdotes to say.
Okay.
By the way, this is one, one anecdote though. I did comment on Commissioner Hinkson's recent post. She put an album up and I thanked her for listening because I probably said too many anecdotes while she was a commissioner. So I do apologize, Commissioner Ali Brown, sort of woven into me.
Okay, let's then go to the public.
The case that we're currently discussing, oh God, is 2024 41BZ 10539 Cross Bay Boulevard, Queens. Should you wish to comment on this case, dial 669-254-5222. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number 1611848885 and press the pound sign. At the prompt after that, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you'll press star nine to raise your hand. Star six to unmute as you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room or ready and wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you're recognized, you'll have three minutes in which to discuss. How much time do you think you'll need?
Okay, um. How much time will you need to do this analysis?
We could use six weeks to make a submission.
That takes us to end of July, so looking at August, right?
Six weeks, well, it's not, it's the beginning of May, so.
We are May, but.
Middle of July, yeah, for a hearing.
Yeah, July. Do we have two hearings in July? I'm sorry, I'm forgetting.
Yes, the 14th, 15th.
So maybe we can schedule this for end of July.
That would be great and that'll.
I forgot we have two hearings in.
So if you are going to do.
Twenty eight, twenty nine, submission is July eighth.
Thank you.
Does that work?
That's fine. Thank you all very much for your.
Thank you. Good to see you in person.
To see you all.
Yeah, we'll be here more. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, final, new case, 2025 04BZ 3718 138 Street, Queens. Is your member of your team going to speak at all?
No, I'm the only one who's going to speak.
Okay, raise your hand. Do you affirm tell truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board? And to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
We state your name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Mitchell Ross. I'm the attorney for the owner applicant. I attended review session. First, I appreciate the board's overall very positive reaction to the special permit. I did note the one or two planned discrepancies. And I want the board to know that a representative from the project architect's office, who's in attendance today, can supply that change, which actually they've already made next week.
Right.
I also noted the wording Commissioner Sheta requested for the survey. And when it is confirmed with your counsel, that also could be.
I emailed you the note earlier.
It's okay. Yeah, he was here all this time, so he will receive it once it, once he goes home.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mitch.
That's so efficient. Thank you very much. And I hadn't, you know, I really, I've been listening rapidly to all of your other cases. They're very interesting. So that can also be provided next week. And as the board stated in its review session, community board seven will meet, as you know, and vote in the matter this coming Monday evening. And they will provide their resolution next week as well. Again, I was pleased to hear the board was satisfied with the aeronautical engineering report. Employees from that office may be listening in the Zoom room, but they have no need to talk because of your very complimentary reaction to that report. Just want to ask the board in closing, in the interest of the coming warm weather and the need to force submit while the weather is good and to kind of keep it going. We're, we're hoping that the hearing can be closed today. And if possible, a decision rendered by the end of this month. But with the record open, we can submit everything by the end, by the middle of next week. That would be greatly appreciated and help the project along.
Okay, I'm going to let you be in the element of silence and suspicion, suspense, or whatever you want to call it. I'll put you in that mode for a little bit. Any questions or comments? Let's go to the public and we'll discuss the next steps.
The case we're currently discussing is 2025 04BZ. Should you wish to comment on this case, dial 669, oh, she put it up, okay. 669-254-5222. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number 1611848885 and press the pound sign. At the next prompt after that, you'll press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, we'll have press star nine to raise your hand. Star six to unmute as you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room or ready, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hands at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you are recognized, you'll have three minutes in which to speak.
Okay. So.
I'm in suspense.
I'm in.
You gotta wait till the thing finishes, so, sorry.
We just.
We gotta wait till fail safe goes.
And I'm going to have to look at the note on my phone. Thank you.
I see Mr. Clyde Pittman, he's here, but I, as you said, we, I think every time Mr. Pittman prepares these reports.
He's, yeah.
He's very thorough.
Yeah, they're thorough and they appeared as a courtesy.
Yeah.
As always.
Yeah. I am going to make a recommendation that we close and we keep the record open for the community board submission and submission of the revised documents.
Yes.
Please do revise the date on the plans.
Okay.
Because we don't want to get confused and send the wrong.
Yeah, I, I totally agree. And it's kind of a pet peeve of mine also when architects don't do that. Every time a date shit come up, give us a new date. I don't know why they don't do that sometimes.
So let's make a motion to close.
Oh, sorry. Oh, chief, oh, chief, oh, chief, hold on. Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabetta.
Aye.
Commissioner Artley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Shutter still up, right?
No, he's, he's absent.
Yeah. Commissioner Yun.
Aye. And we will schedule this for June nine. The reason is the submission for the next one is already passed.
I see. Thank you very, very much. Glad I could be quick after a long day for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, you had to wait all this time, but that's how it goes.
Thank you. This concludes the public hearing.
To be here a lot more and love for listening.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I forgot something and I completely.
We got to remember to the website.
Nobody is listening anymore. I completely forgot.
Why?
It's okay.
You've got the next day.
The website.
Website. We'll, we'll make the announcement at the next hearing. If anybody's listening, our website will be, has been, is being spruced up and it's going to have a whole new look. And the entire team of BSA has been working frantically to make this leap to the next decade. And it should be up and running in a week or so.
Maybe we should just say up to the current decade, not to the next decade.
Okay, okay. Up, up, up to the current decade. But I, and we hope that we can keep working on it to improve it even more. We are working towards that. So, sorry.
I congratulate you all. I'm glad I got to hear that. Thank you.
This concludes the public hearing for May 6th, 2025. Thank you one and all.
I completely forgot.